Gentlemen, it's 6:07 PM. It's Wednesday, September 23rd. This is our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is being audio and video recorded. It will be shown on Channel 9 and replayed on Channel 9. Excuse me, I don't believe it's live on Channel 9, but it will be replayed. And there's no scheduled hearings. Public input can be provided, as you know, through email, telephone, or via Zoom, as we have set up this evening. And with that, I ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention the passing of a number of Dyton residents, or former Dyton residents, who have passed since our last meeting. Margaret Borden, she was my neighbor when I first moved to Gray Terrace. Furmer Gingris, Irene Rhines, mother of Tim Rhines. William R. Royd, son of Robert and Eleanor Royd, superintendent in Dyton and Dyton Rehoboth for a number of years. Bill was a member of the Class of 1960, which was the last class to graduate from Dyton High School. Patricia Sadler, Brian Sullivan, Lilia Viveras, George Williams. In their memory, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And our condolences to their friends and family as well. So first off, we have a scheduled appointment with Jeffrey and Teresa Enton to discuss a tree at 382 Main Street. And I know there's a lot of correspondence about this in our packet, but I, if either we wanted to start with a recap, maybe, if Mr. Enton wanted to recap the situation with the tree? Can he hear us? No.
Mr. Enton, did you hear any of that? Can you hear me?
Yes. I can hear you, I'm having a little trouble hearing your chairman.
Okay, he was just opening the floor for the item that you're here to discuss today with the tree. And he's giving you the floor, is that right?
Yeah, can you, can you bring the laptop up here? Because that's not, yeah. Is it plugged in?
Yep.
Okay.
If you want to change the view to just him.
Sure, sure, and maybe next week, Mrs. Brady, maybe we could use Zoom on your iPad? Because I think the audio would be better, if you're not also using it.
So, well, we're not going to do this after my idea of switching.
No, we can do this for now, because we're like mid-meeting, I'm just saying, maybe the next meeting, so the audio is better. I apologize, Mr. Enton. My apologies.
Mr. Chairman, this is the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Enton is sitting here quickly, and we're happy that you invited him to join us this evening.
I wanted to give you the floor if you wanted to explain the situation with the tree. I know we have a lot of documentation in our packet, but I'm not sure everyone, or anyone watching this, is reading that material. So did you want to recap for us?
Oh, yes, sir, may I be happy to?
Sure.
Very briefly, we have a decayed and dying tree located on the property of the playground of the school district and abutting hour property. Half of it is already dead, the other half is living. And we were advised by our insurance companies, then in the owner's home at 382 Main Street, was advised that the overhanging branches and all tree should be cut down as it was a danger to the people living in the abutting property, the tenant's property, and to the structure of the home itself. So I originally contracted you both, and we had our correspondence back and forth. Opposition is, as Mr. Ferry has indicated, that we know we have a right to cut down the decayed part of the tree and live on Mrs. Enton's property. But the Board of Selectmen have the responsibility and obligation to do. Mr. Benny doesn't want to start cutting the town trees and then have to petition the town of Dyton for reimbursement of the cost. So opposition is, based on the most recent correspondence I sent you dated September 11, I believe it's the obligation of the town to either remove the dead parts of the tree or remove the tree entirely. And that's our desire, and that's what we're requesting of the town, is taxpayers and Mrs. Benny being a homeowner on the town.
Thank you, Mr. Enton. So, did you or Mr. Ferry want to speak about this?
I'd prefer to, Mr. Ferry.
Okay.
He's probably going to have to come up here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. He's not, you'll have to, I'll put my mask on. Yeah, he won't, if you speak anywhere other than over here, he won't be able to hear you.
Evening, Mr. Enton.
Good evening.
Yeah, my name's Tom Ferry, the tree worker, Tom Danning. And is that, there's Teresa behind you?
Yes, it is.
Right, thanks, uh, nice to meet you guys, unfortunately in this situation. Also want to thank Teresa, I remember moving that yard house that was donated to the town two years back, also. I'm not sure that the whole dynamics of that, and that's partly, I'm using that as a segue to where we're going, but I do appreciate your concern for historic artifacts and the preservation, and you were part of that. But where we took that out in the shed, and that row of varieties and a tree in question, I'm not convinced it's a town tree. And where I stand, I believe it's a town's burden to survey it either. Do you have an actual plan? Our assessor maps does not have an actual plan with meets and bounds. Do you have anything like that to help us with that?
I do not, but I have photographs, which I sent to you by September 11th, showing the bottom. And if you, the rest of the photographs, I believe it shows that the majority of the tree, other than the dead portion, possibly one quarter of the tree that hangs over onto Mrs. Benny's land, that the actual trunk of the tree is to the left, as you face north, from Main Street, to the left of the bottom, which puts it against the fence of the recreation, of the school recreation area there, the park.
Right.
And Mr. Sylvia, who was the abutting neighbor, indicated that he is aware of the fact, after speaking, I don't know if you knew, Mr. Ferry, some seven years ago, that yes, in fact, that is the boundary, and that that tree is on the town property. And I spoke to him just before sending my last letter to the town. I don't have a survey on 382 Main Street property.
Right, the dilemma I have is, especially if it was to, can be considered as a public shade tree, that's really my jurisdiction, this is so far away from the road, but it is a abutting, or possibly abutting town property, that's technically not a town shade tree. As far as that bounding question, I'm familiar with that boundary you're talking about, but I'm not convinced that's a town bound, that's probably the other abutting, what used to be the Methodist church there? That, that's probably their corner bound. It could be on the bound that separates us, but I'm not sure. I just got to be very careful about spending town funds beyond our jurisdiction, if I'm sure you understand that. And same as, the same way that you feel that you don't want to go beyond your property either, I stand the same, I have the same situation.
Well, yeah. I don't know how you wish to resolve this, I think the town needs to know what properties it owns, and if there's a tree on its property that's causing a danger to the public and to the owners of the properties, then the town could be, would be exposed to liability of endangerment and personal injury to a property then. As far as I'm concerned, if the bound is to the east and to the right, as you look from Main Street north, of my property, then the only property left is that schoolyard, that playground, and that would be town property. So I know that that bound separates me from the abutting owners, and the town of Dyton is the abutting owner of that next property over.
Right, and even if it was a town tree, you still have the responsibility and ability and the right to trim and protect your property.
I, I don't have the responsibility to protect my property from a town tree, I have the right to protect it.
That's right.
But I have the responsibility to protect my tenants and guests to the property. But the responsibility for a defective and decayed and dying tree that is potentially dangerous to Mrs. Benny's property, that's the responsibility of the owner of the tree.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, that's the town fighting. Now, we have, we're insured by Lloyd's of London, actually, and my insurance company has been contacted, and they have told me that as long as they're concerned, they are insuring us. But that should something happen, they intend to hold the town liable.
That, that's fine, we can wait for that if you'd like. I, I have a resolution, I didn't speak with the Selectmen or the Town Administrator, but I'd like to propose something and we see where it goes.
Sure.
Are you guys willing to survey the property? And maybe we'll entertain a full removal of a tree minus grinding the stump?
I always think it's the responsibility of Mrs. Enton to pay for the survey for a tree that we believe is on town property, and all of the existing evidence shows it is. If the town denies that it's their tree, then I think, without any evidence that it's, that it's on Mrs. Benny's property, I think it's the obligation of the town to have their survey crew surveying the property and tell them where their lot lines are. They have lot lines established for tax purposes. So you're taxing somebody on that property, in this case, Mrs. Enton, Mr. Sylvia to the west, and, well, the town, the schoolyard playground. The town has maps, it has to have maps for these assessors' purposes. So, and the assessor's map should show, it may not show meets and bounds and degrees and minutes, but it would certainly show distances.
Right.
And I would think that you, it should consult those assessors' plans.
I, I worked in that, again, today also prior to this meeting. To no avail, that whole corner between Palmer and beyond East of you, we can't find a conveyance or the actual, any bound to start and measure off of, unfortunately. So I was hoping we could come to some type of resolution. Back to that insurance company, last August of 19, I called them, because I've never had an insurance company demand the town to trim back trees on their client's properties. And they denied that that happened. They suggested that the tree be cut back due to mildew and mold for the singles, but not have the town do it by any means.
Well, after you spoke with the weather, you spoke with the high consultant, Mr. Paul Burke, and he indicated clearly that the responsibility for the tree is for the town of Dyton. The insurance company, though correct, is not going to demand that you take it down. He said, "That's my responsibility to demand the town take it down." And that's what I'm doing.
Yep. So that same law, that same law in chapter, he's referring to in chapter 87, I don't have the right to go on your property either to cut the tree.
I'll certainly give you permission to go on the property if you need to. If it can't be removed from your own town of Dyton property, you won't be allowed to move.
I, I think there's got to be some, I, I really suggest, the suggestion I made would work. It's, we both stand the same situation, we need to know where the bounds are, we both have an interest. If we share that shed, like the assessors' map, that property line goes right down the middle of the shed, if not, we have most of it. That, that's, I believe, is a problem and an insurance nightmare also. So we, we have a boundary line situation outside of just a tree that needs to be resolved. So that's, that's as much as I can say right now.
Are you telling me there are no assessors' plans to delineate Mrs. Enton's property from the schoolyard and Mr. Sylvia's property, or no plans to tell the lots?
I have with me what I have, what's available at the assessors' office, but it doesn't give you any place to start to measure from, all it is, is just lines. I believe your frontage is 100 feet, or is it 90?
It's inconceivable to leave the town of Dyton doesn't know from the assessment plans what property owners own what lots, and what the town owns, which in this case is that schoolyard playground.
Right, that, that schoolyard was always a gray area.
How do you assess people on lots if you don't know the, the area of the lot?
Nope, that's what I stand, and even if it's a town tree, I mean, you, you have the right to, to have it trimmed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Do you mind moving, just a little closer, I'm going to move.
All right, until that's where it's 7:00.
Oh, yeah, actually, I'm going to be pro out.
Laptop? Turn the torch.
Is, am I going to hit me? Thank you, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Enton.
Uh, Mr. Enton and Miss Enton, who owns the property, whose name is actually on the deed for this property?
The property is owned by Mrs. Enton and the trust. She's a entree trustee.
Okay, I was, the reason I asked that is because you said your property, and everything I've read says her property. So, Mrs., Miss Enton is the owner in trust of 382 Main Street, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. In reference to the remark about how does the town know what to tax and so forth and so on, how long have you owned that property?
Since my cousin Dean, he passed away in 2009.
Okay. At the time of the property being put into a trust or transferred to your name, there would have been a recording at the Registry of Deeds. The deed that was issued should contain meets and bounds. That information would be eventually forwarded to the Board of Assessors, and based on the information contained in that deed, that's how they determine what is taxable. So it's not a matter of the town not knowing what it owns. The answer about questions is direct, directly related to what is at the Registry of Deeds and what is given to the Board of Assessors.
We're not aware of that. But the assessors also have a plot land that they draw on, and they drove, they brought them from those deeds. So they should know by the plot land where that lot is, at these are the playgrounds.
So, Pacheco, did you have any comments, questions? And you can move, I'll move to the left.
Good evening. I had an opportunity today to go up to the park and see the tree. And what I saw was that that tree is outside of the fence where the park is. I suspect, and it's not Mrs. Enton's responsibility, but I suspect when that tree was planted, it was planted on that property, and now it, it has expanded. I'm going to agree with what Mr. Ferry has offered. If that land is surveyed, and it shows that that tree is on town property, I, as a member of the board, would be asking the board to have that tree taken down at our expense. But I'm not convinced that that tree is on our property, so that's my concern. I, I hear you keep on saying that it's on town property, but that doesn't mean it's on town property. And like I said, I did have an opportunity to take a look at that today, and I'm not convinced it's on town property. I think it may have grown on the town property, but it didn't start off on town property. So perhaps if, if you want to have the land surveyed, and it comes back and that's on town property, I'd be the first to ask the board to take on the responsibility of taking that tree down.
Well, I appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate your knowledge of property. We know the fence, that it's not erected exactly on the town on the line between the roads. Normally fences are erected a foot, a foot and a half.
Yeah, I'm, excuse me, I'm, uh, yeah. We, we require at least a foot from the bound, from the neighbor's property for the fence to be installed.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that being the case, one foot would put the tree clearly to the middle of the tree on the school playground property.
I don't think it puts it in the middle of the tree, that's a pretty big, big tree anyway. Until the, my position is, until the board knows for sure who owns that tree, I'm not going to ask that it be taken down by the, by the town.
Mr. Enton?
Yeah?
Can you hear me still?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good, this is, this is good. I mean, that's sincere. I agree with my colleague, Selectman Pacheco. I do understand the seriousness around quote-unquote "dangerous" trees, especially the trees that are older, trees that might have dead parts. So if it can be proven via the survey that the tree is on town property, I will also happily support its removal. My other concern is the town paying for the survey, and then it is a possibility that the survey results in it not being on the town property, and now we have paid for a survey, and the tree's not on our property. So that is a possibility, and it is a concern I have as a representative of the town.
Well, I can appreciate that concern. It's just a shame that the town doesn't have internal records that is available information to determine what property is owned by the town, especially since it's a town's schoolyard, recreation park. If it were nothing that the people died at the town, was in the middle of the woods, that's one thing. But, you know, you have a, you have a schoolyard that the town's clearly like it for. If you don't know where it begins and where it ends in terms of its waters, I think that's a problem for the town. It can become a problem for me, but for Mrs. Benny, it's fine. But certainly a problem for the town.
Mr. Enton, I want to, I think our Selectman Gulart had another comment, and then I wanted to give the floor to the Town Administrator, who I believe also had a question or a comment. Selecting the one? You're not going to move?
Okay. I agree with my colleagues, we are dealing with a problem here that is clearly not identified, that being, whose tree is it that is being discussed? I think it's a reasonable solution that we, we, we want to work together to an amicable conclusion. And I really think that a shared proposal, as presented by Mr. Ferry, is the best way to go. You will benefit from having your property surveyed. The town will not benefit from it being surveyed if we find out that it's not, the tree is not on town property. By the same token, the benefit would be, your survey would be an asset to you, it would clearly delineate your property and town property and your abutting property, and the cost to remove the tree, should it be determined that it is on town property, would be the expense of the town. My experience with having property surveyed, it would be less costly to have the survey and do that than it is to take down a tree, because I've had that done too, and that is very expensive. So I think that the best way to solve this is, we, we both come together, we, you and the town, the parties in this discussion, and each do something to help resolve the issue. I think the least expensive way for you is to have the property surveyed. If your attitude is, "We don't want to spend anything on it," then we're at an impasse. But I, I think we all want to get this resolved. So that's what I would suggest. I would also point out that that fence has been there for who knows how long, and the reference that Mr. Pacheco made to the requirement for fencing, I don't know when that was put in. But my guess is, when that fence was installed, the town didn't have those necessary regulations that we have on the books now. So that's another question. And the only way it's going to get resolved is to have a surveyor take a look at it.
And, Mr. Enton, I wanted to, the Town Administrator wanted to speak, but I wanted to ask my colleague, because it sounds like Selectman Pacheco and I will, have stated that we will support the tree whenever work needs to be done with the dangerous tree that gets proven to be on town property, is that your position?
I agree, I agree with you, yes.
So the three Selectmen, the Board is unanimous, in if this tree is on town property, we will act to have it removed or remediated in any way. And the Highway Superintendent has also said the same thing. With that, not even the Administrator, did you want to? Keep, keep up here.
Oh, that's fine, I, it's actually a picture. So I had the opportunity, as Mr. Enton had.
Can you hear the Town Administrator?
No. I'm Italian, I'm nice and loud. So, as you had stated, Mr. Enton, this has been going on for quite some time. You can't hear me now? This has been going on since last year. Mr. Ferry and I did visit the property in March, where there wasn't a lot of overgrowth. You probably saw, Selectman Pacheco, quite a lot of overgrowth. This is not a great picture, but I did take a photo. This is why I believe this tree is not on town property, and I, I support the Board's decision tonight, whatever it may be. I'm just going to show him this picture that I took. There's the fence, the tree, and then what looks like a marker, a very old marker. So I'm just showing this picture, and actually, let me show you first. Albeit, it's not a great photo, but that is the fence, it's from March 3rd. If you have a cell phone, I'd be happy to text this to you or email it to you. If you want to type it in the chat box, I'll be able to do that, so you can get a better look at it, if you want to do that.
Yeah, I, I'm prepared to read that photograph.
Okay, so I'm just showing the board right now, okay?
Very old fence.
It's very old, so the marker is here. You can see that's on the inside of the tree. This is, I'm standing on the playground aspect, leaning over a little bit, taking the photo. Yeah, right there.
Looking at that right there.
Gotcha. Did you have any other remarks?
That's it.
Mr. Ferry, did you have any other remarks?
But if a survey was to happen, it should be from Main Street to School Lane.
Mr. Enton, Mr. Ferry, I know you probably can't hear him, Mr. Ferry? Sorry. Mr. Ferry said that the, if a survey is to be performed, that it should be from Main Street to School Lane?
Correct.
Did you hear that?
I heard you say that.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, he's, he's not near the computer. You have to be very close to the computer for the audio.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I notice you're the board.
Sure.
Let me, let me introduce the compromise as was just stated, and try to solve this in passing. Mrs. Mrs. Enton said she will have out the way to a boundary lot survey.
Okay.
A where line, the town, the tree that you made sweet is. We have a survey, and we will have it at our expense. And that will be our compromise to the town, and considering it's up to the town tree, I think it can, let the town, you know, look like it's possible.
And may I ask, you may have already answered this, and I apologize. If you do the survey and the tree, it is proven or shown that the tree is on town property, you are not going to ask the town to then remunerate you for the survey, right? This is just for Mrs. Enton's property? For the sake of her?
We'll draw the cost of survey.
Okay.
And you will benefit from it, and the town will benefit from it in, as we have discussed in our statement. Friends, it's great.
Thank you, Mr. Enton. Mr. Ferry, did you have anything? I'm sorry, I thought you stood up.
That, that would be great.
Um, Mr. Ferry is saying that that sounds good. Colleagues?
I think it's a good solution.
And again, we are stating publicly that if the tree, if this survey proves that the tree is on, or shows that the tree is on town property, then we will take care of it.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to support.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board take this matter under advisement pending a survey by a licensed certified surveyor, with the results being presented to the town, at which time we will, again, take this as an agenda item and act on it.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, to take this under advisement until we have the results from the survey. Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you both so much. I appreciate the compromised solution, and we look forward to discussing the results of the survey with you both.
Thank you, we're got it, Ed.
You too.
You as well. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move that.
Sure, yep. However you wanna do it.
You wouldn't mind coming to the center of our group's shape area?
Could we get a, could we pull another chair?
Yes.
So they don't have to stand? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, your preference. Thank you for letting us use our laptop.
Yes, no problem.
I know it's a lot of, we'll figure, we'll, we'll put our heads together on our solution for this audio.
I think I would propose to buy a outside microphone.
Yep, yeah, it might be something like that. Mm-hmm. So we have Tanya Patricio and Jenna Barr here for a presentation and perhaps a discussion on the Dyson Community Garden Plan that you both have devised. And so with that, I did wanna yield the floor to you. I did wanna add one thing. The Agricultural Commission has recommended, and we'll discuss this, maybe we can take it out of order after they present, or however we wanna do it. But they have recommended for approval this plan that's being presented tonight to the Board of Selectmen. And with that, ladies, you're at the floor.
Okay, so hello, everybody. Thank you so much for seeing us. My name is Tanya Patricio. This is Jenna Barr. And we have devised a plan for community garden here in Dyson to be located at 929 Somerset Ave, where the house right adjacent to town hall here is currently sitting. Do you, does anyone need a copy of our proposal and an app? Or do you have that already?
Nope, we've got one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, does it have a proposal?
If, if you wish to remove your mask while you talk, it might be easier.
Yeah, I just, by all means.
Just be six feet up.
Yeah, the two of yous.
I think we're far enough apart.
No, we're, then, then maybe six feet.
From each other.
Yes.
It's a little warm in here.
You notice we take hours off more.
So what we have devised is we will be planting over 3,000 square feet worth of garden. The garden will consist of all different kinds of vegetables. And everything that comes out of the garden, all of the harvest will be donated to the Dyson Community Coop Bay. Since then, I'll leave grounds once a month. Anything in excess will be given to our friends that have time here to take home or deliver to Lincoln Village. But we're hoping to serve our neighbors in addition to getting canned goods, to give them some fresh produce as well. We are, we decided to use the back-to-eat-in-garden method. We were encouraged not to dig up the ground, not knowing what was in the soil and not having toxic tests done already. So we will be doing that process, which entails laying a first layer of cardboard, followed by four inches of compost, followed by four inches of all-natural wood chips. And the premises of the wood chips and the cardboard will be oyster. So we'll need to do less watering, less deeding. And we should be able to deal with that first. Yes. So most of our planning phases for this project are pending the removal or demolition of the house, which from my understanding, the house was auctioned off. And they have it until September 30th to remove it from the property.
Has that changed somewhat?
It's changed. I spoke with you guys. So they're willing to do it two weeks, two weeks, I'm sorry. That's not, it's in your time of skill.
Nope, that's good. So we do have a phase plan if you look on the front of our package. We're both affiliated with Boy Scout Troop 45 in Dyson. I am the scout master for the girls' troop. Todd Matt is our committee chair for the boys and girls. Also, the committee, on the committee for Path 45, which is Cub Scouts, as well as the Den Leaver for the Cub Scouts. So we've decided that along with the adult volunteer involvement with this plan, we also wanna kind of incorporate the Boy Scouts. We've also touched base with the Girl Scouts to get them involved in the Cub Scouts, because we really wanna kinda incorporate the children into this. It's good leadership, you know, good methods for teaching them hard work, seeing the food they're laboring. So we really want this to be more of a hands-on of the children's involvement from start to finish, for them to see, you know, the great efforts that they're doing in our community and all the ways that they can help, like they do every year with all the projects that they have. So like Tanya said, the property is gonna be done at 9:29. We do have a map on the back of our current garden bed situation. We will have two beds of raised boxes, and we will have two ground level beds. So the raised boxes right now, I believe one bed is going to be for the corn. I believe we have five boxes for that, that's gonna be a backlot. We also have a smaller area that we're gonna do some of the smaller items, square foods, white peppers, green beans, things like that. The phase one that we are anticipating to start as soon as possible, but our guidelines are kind of leaning towards November, is to get everything out there, get all the materials. We do have a list of supplies, if you look on the second page, of things that we are gonna require. We do have a budget through the Agricultural Commission, but we are mostly looking to try and get things donated to the town for this project. So some of the supplies are 54 six-by-eight rough cut pine boards for the beds. Obviously, we'll need screws to put these all together, which we are hoping that is gonna be part of a project for the kids to do, the older scouts to get them to help us assemble, lay the cardboard down, and really get them involved in kind of the whole start of the garden. So hopefully, in November, we can get that all assembled, get the cardboard, the compost, and the wood chips on the place, let everything settle until the spring. And to see what the supplies, there is quite a list of supplies, but as I said, you know, we are hoping with the board's approval that we can get a lot of this donated as a gift to the town. I do have a Google Doc for you guys that I'll be printing out to give to you guys pending approval, so that you guys can sign off on any of the donation gifts to the town.
Sure.
The only things that we have in here that we may more likely have to purchase rather than have donated is we have put in place for a request for a frost proof yard hydrant. Now, depending on where it gets placed, I know Mr. Aronstein was gonna help us look into what the best position would be as far as a water source, if it was gonna come directly from 138th Road, or if we would be able to pull it from, I believe, the sewer commission building or the...
No, we won't be doing that.
No, no, that's, so we're gonna pull it from the road. So we do have to find out how much that's gonna cost. When I did look into it, it said anywhere from $500 and up. We're also gonna need 387 square feet of fencing to go along the perimeter of all the beds. We had looked into possibly fencing in the individual beds, but we feel that it's better to fence the whole thing in. We wanna try and keep ADA compliant as possible. Tanya did meet with...
I have, I can touch with Mr. Patricio.
Yeah, yes.
And so we are discussing dimensions to make sure that it is accessible for everyone. And also that the ground is suitable for wheelchairs and others to move around freely. So I'm in touch with him. I still need to follow up with him, as he wanted to do some research and then get back to me. So I'll be doing that very shortly.
So we're hopeful that those of the supplies we will be able to get donated, it's just the fencing and, like I said, frost proof hydrant, that would be a cost that we won't be able to afford.
So per the agr, the, I just wanted to make a few points. So my, my first point on the fencing is I believe there was a conversation that happened at the Agricultural Commission meeting about if a, what's the word? Like a nonprofit were to be formed, like Friends of the Dyson Community Garden? Like, could, could they work with a group like the Dyson Lions Club on something like fencing? So that, so I know you had to re, or we're going to reach out to the Lions on that.
Yeah, so we were waiting until this meeting was...
Mm-hmm, yeah, of course, yeah.
Before we move forward.
Putting the, putting the horse before the cart.
This idea actually bothered Mr. Ferry about wood chips. Getting the square footage on that earlier. But, yeah, once that, everything is settled and approved, I would like to get everything started as soon as possible, because the quicker we get everything there to settle, the better the crops will be once we can get in there in the spring.
That other point was, you had mentioned that Agricultural Commission had a budget. So at our last meeting, the Agricultural Commission, I'm a non-voting member, but they did, they did authorize, excuse me, I was looking for the right word, Chairman Arujo to sign off on expenses. So he will be the only person that can approve things out of the budget. And they, they did as overseers of the community garden, broad overseers. They did also approve, or what's the word I'm looking for? Designate, I guess, the BSA Troop 45 Dyson as the custodians of the garden as well. So I just wanted to state that. Regarding any donations, and this is more for the public, anything that's donated has to be tracked and voted on, I believe, by the Board of Selectmen to be accepted by the town. Is that correct?
That is correct. And why it's very important that your group has been designated a custodian is because the town is not able to solicit donations of any kind.
Correct.
So where they have a nonprofit group running the show, I guess, over there, that is a very powerful thing. But anything that does come into our list is voted on as town property. And then again, anything removed from the property is declared surplus by this board, because every rock, twill, whatever, essentially, property of the town. And we need to go out through corrective management procedures. So it seems silly, but we have to, we're stretching the laws.
And then if, I'm sorry, you have a floor.
Okay. So, yeah, if you just, I mean, if you were to skim through, we have this broken up into about three to four phases. Most importantly for me is just getting stuff put together, letting it sit there to settle. Next most important would be getting the fence up and going before we can put any of our seedlings or anything in there, just because we have an abundance of wildlife, and we don't want them eating all the crops before they can get out to our community anymore. So if there's any questions from you guys, you have to answer them.
Yep, and however, however, sure. Yep, you can take them.
So I think this is a great idea, and I'm gonna support you on this. But I do have some concerns and some questions as to the location of where it's gonna be, because there is a future for that lot over there. I would like to see a new library, and everybody may be in favor of that. That's what I'm, I'm looking for, so that's gonna be up front. It has to be roomful parking. So I'm saying that this garden should be as far back as, as possible.
Yep, so we've actually been talking with Brett and Mallory regarding that. So we would love to see a library go in there. And we have made arrangements for, if you look at the map here...
I couldn't tell from the map.
It's, oh, can I?
Oh, in your package.
Yeah, I can't tell from the map.
It should be stated, this, this map is not like current. We had a question about this at the ag comm meeting. This is really old. This, 'cause it shows this tree shading half of, if you go over there...
I don't like it's this, I can't see.
Oh, yeah, yours is worse. Let's...
I have, I have...
You have another one, yeah.
It shows the tree shading, and then when we were over there, that's actually where we had our meeting, and I never even saw that tree.
No, yes.
So this is probably anywhere from 10 to 15 years old, this Google Earth in this tree.
I'm actually going to request that we survey the property, because there's an abutment that goes, it goes around like a sea. And I don't want us planting something to go as far back as possible on their property. So one of my requests is up for authorizing expenditures for surveying.
There was also a discussion about, so we all agree, like I also am gonna support a library going over there, but we know that that's a few, a few years down the road, and so...
Hopefully, we can have both.
Correct. And so they actually have kept that in mind as they designed this, so that the garden is part of the library. Like they mesh together, and it's more like a base.
It was close to the house.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be concerning, because the library's gonna be bigger than the house, probably, as we get it, plus the parking lot, so...
We hope.
So I would prefer that it be further back, and I agree that the land should be surveyed.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with the back-to-eat-in. It almost sounds like we're planting apple trees there.
I know.
And I'm not supposed to eat the apples, I guess. But it's basically a no-dig. Is that?
Yes.
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah.
And you're talking about putting four inches of compost and four inches of wood chips.
Yep.
But the beds are only gonna be six inches high, so you...
No, actually, the beds are gonna be 12 inches high, because each bed is gonna require six boards altogether. So it's gonna be double on each side, and then there's gonna be one board cut in half.
Four by eight, yeah, four by eight.
Yep.
So regarding ADA compliance, then, I think at least one of the raised beds needs to be high. So if you're in a wheelchair, you're able to, we plant or whatever. So that's something that I'm sure Mr. Gia would be interested in.
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to reach out to him, because the only thing that we need for certain was that we needed a certain amount of space around each bed and each box so that somebody could be accessible to it. So that's why we wanted to reach out with him and kind of make it as accessible as possible.
Yeah, we did bring it up, we had an ADA commission meeting last week. I'm not a voting member, but I'm a member of the commission. And that, this was brought up. We wanted more details, obviously, but it clearly has to be ADA compliant.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I'm sure that that's of interest to you guys.
We don't wanna have to do this again. We wanted to do it right the first time. We want it accessible to everybody in town, everybody, everybody. And so adding a couple of boards to make something higher, I mean, those are such easy steps that we can take to make a big difference. But it's not a problem. And as far as the library goes, if in the future we have to move a bed, we'll move a bed. Yeah, the back-to-eat-in method is extremely conducive to the circumstances of us wanting a nice, really nice library over there. So that way, all the stuff is compostable. So all we have to do is really kind of like knock it down, maybe plant some seeds, and the next bed can be rebuilt in the back. Which is what an issue, a concern for our fences, because we have to make the decision of what type of fence we want there. In my opinion, I think it's more of a less-is-more approach right now, just for the next few years, until we know that the library's going there and where the library's gonna go. And then at that point, we can invest more money and have something nicer, and have something better, and have something that's gonna be more long-lasting.
I feel like we could also, just from being over there, what I remember is there's a lot of like brush and stuff. Like we could probably clear some of that to move things back a little bit. The only thing is you would have to do the back-to-eat-in.
We're talking to Mr. Ferry.
Well, yes, I have his expertise.
And once the property gets surveyed, that's in, that's in, kind of air quotes, in one of our phases, is that there's a couple of sections that we would like to have cleared. There's, where bed two is in the back, between two and three, there's like what seems to be either like what was maybe a foundation of a barn or possible stone wall there. And there's a lot of briars up there and horns. So we wanna, we would like to have that cleared. Plus, I mean, there's regular cleanup and raking and stuff like that that we would like to do over there, but we're hoping that one to get surveyed. We have a better idea of the exact boundaries of the property, because it has been surveyed, like ever as far as I know. So we can have a better idea of where things are gonna be moved to in the future and kind of anticipate that in the years to come before the library gets put in, so we can back things up.
So regarding the fencing, it has to be woodchuck-proof.
The woodchuck-proof, we would like to make it deer-proof, but we really can't electrify it, we made it 10 feet tall, so...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be...
Kind of just crossing our fingers with that, yeah.
It's gonna be woodchuck, because I'm gonna be, when I catch high woodchucks in my garden, I'm gonna be bringing them over here, so you wanna make sure that they're...
Oh, yes. Bring it to my house, actually. It'll be my house. You can bring it to my house, too.
So the, the ACO was gonna inform you, you can't do that.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, as a possibility.
Certain, good trouble.
Maybe somebody would, yes.
I, I even, I even thought if they'd allow me to take squirrels over the river, and I was told...
These are birdly squirrels.
They can't, they can't relocate the critters.
Yeah, so my two last questions, number one is, I had mentioned when the first was being discussed, I would prefer, I would practically demand that be organic, and no chemicals are to be used there.
That's, that's.
Pesticides or fertilizers.
We have children working in these gardens, so we.
And chemicals and all.
Yeah, we don't, we don't pesticide our gardens at all, it kind of just runs its course, so I don't really even, that doesn't even really come into our mind frame as far as like what we're gonna do with it. The back-to-eating method is supposed to, with the compost, the woodchips, it's supposed to create enough balance that we really don't need to fertilize, so, but we've never done this method before, we've just kind of like researched it and looked up YouTube and watched videos and stuff.
There's a lot of videos on YouTube, I know did.
Oh, yeah.
Chow's darling, I think it's darling in, in England, has, almost every week, there's something on it, there's been a bunch of old videos.
Oh, yeah, there's so amazing videos on there, I think, I probably watched like three hours worth of videos on this, and it seems to be very promising that I'm not gonna have to make anybody go out that way, so we can fertilize, and that I just have to worry about potentially watering, but, yeah, so it's kind of, this year's gonna be our trial and error, and see how it goes, but I am extremely optimistic that if we get a great compost in there, that we're not even gonna have to worry about fertilizing anything.
We also have a local resource, too. I know Selectmen Gulag has a question, you have another question. We also have a local resource from the person, I believe they own a farm, actually, Berkeley, who suggested this method. So if, I feel like if we need, if we need expertise, or if we hit a snag, we have like, you know, YouTube tutorials definitely help, I would be the first to say that.
Yeah.
But we have some hands-on resources as well.
Directly pointed and directed by a specific person who's used this before, so she strongly encouraged us that it be the best organic method that we could come up with for our project.
So my last question is on the water, because I think that's gonna be a big expense. Having just replaced my, my frozen water hydra, whatever they, they call it, that's about 125, but it's actually getting the water to the.
Right, that getting the water from the road to the.
Big expense, so you may the first year not have that set up, I just, I just, I would hope you do, whether some kind of a tank can be put over there that holds water in the meantime, for the summer, obviously, you can't do that in the winter, but that's really an expense, because we're not sure where the, you know, if the library was already there, and you had water in the library, it'd be easy.
It'd be easy.
They'd go right from the library.
Right.
But now we're practically talking about going from the street, or actually, Town Hall, which I don't think we're gonna do, because we're not gonna take.
Yeah, we were hoping that we'd be able to run it after they moved the house, but everything's been shut off at the house.
Yeah.
So there's no access to it being there, so really, that's our only option, or bringing in the water.
Yeah, or just gonna be.
So that's, that's the only reason why this method was preferred, because apparently we're not supposed to act the water. It's supposed to self-contain itself, the woodchips lock in the moisture, we get a few rain showers here and there, like, maybe once a month, and we're excellent, and we're sitting pretty for the whole season.
That's the theory.
But I, being a gardener, and like knowing that I water my plants every day, I'm a little not-so-optimistic about that part, so.
What about setting up, bringing in weeds, and I know you have a question about those little rain jug things.
Well, we, we put that in the budget originally as like a Plan Z of like, if worst be the worst, we could buy jugs and like store water over there.
They promote rain barrels.
Yeah, rain barrels.
Yeah, rain barrels.
So you can't put.
They're like sixty years.
Rain barrels would be much better.
We need a building, though, for the rain to come down on our roof, to go from the gutter, you know.
Not necessarily.
So how?
So we can set up, I call them paper buckets, plastic buckets, you can set them up with like a netted funnel system in the yard, in an open area, collect water. Seeing as there's not gonna be a building there, we don't have a resource to put it to a gutter.
Yeah, yeah.
Or have it running off of a gutter, so if we had to use those, which I think would be the most inexpensive way to handle it, that would be, that would be the way to go, yeah.
So that's all my questions at this time.
The fertilizer needs to be in the list here, I assume that's organic fertilizer?
It would be organic if we need it, but we're not even, we don't even think we're gonna need it, but I had to list it as an item, just because it's something that could potentially come up.
Okay.
And if it is a fertilizer that we use, we would be using Neptune's Harvest, which is organic seaweed, kelp, and.
Chicken milk.
Fish extract.
Fish.
Yes.
Early on, when I heard about this, I had been asked to approach the Aggie School, because they're going to be taking down the Natural History Museum, that's that white building on the south campus that looks like a little barn, but it's, or a house. Mr. Ferry, is it still up?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so I was asked to contact the county superintendent of schools, Mrs. Sands, and ask if, when they take that building down, it's gonna be demolished, and before they cut everything off, after they take what they want, would they allow the town of Dayton to scavenge that property? And the remark, the permission came back from the Board of Trustees, they would be happy for Dayton to go on the property and remove what would be considered useful. So it would be Mr. Ferry and Mr. Aggie that would be involved with this, because obviously, we're not gonna have people going into a construction site, and they're, they're frequently there anyhow because of inspections and things. So there is a possibility that there could be some donated lumber, it's a private, excuse me, it's a public entity willing to give this to another public entity, so it's not like we're looking for donations. I mean, we've got a relationship with the county that's been excellent.
If you don't mind me just butting in for a second, we actually discussed some of that at the Agricultural Commission with Leslie, and she was gonna double check.
Leslie went check.
She was gonna double check, she said she wasn't sure if we were allowed to do that, because we were a town and they were part of the county.
No, no, she's not aware of what is already taken out.
Yeah, I think this is like above.
The superintendent-director talked, went to the Board of Trustees, and I said to her when I asked, I told her, I asked that the town be allowed to scavenge, and I explained to her that there was plans for a community garden, and it's kind of ironic that some of the lumber from the County Aggie School could end up in a community garden, she thought it was fantastic. So what may be available will really be up to Mr. Aggie and Mr. Ferry, because they would be the individuals that would be involved. So, that's a possibility. Permission has been given by the trustees, so it's just a matter of, we'll keep track of when the building comes down, because there would have to be a demolition permit, so I'm sure that they would be in touch with Mr. Aggie.
Yes, he's over there most.
Okay, so you can check periodically with Mr. Aggie, I'm Mr. Ferry, and say, what's happening with the building, but that's a potential. The other thing I would mention to you is free seeds. University of Rhode Island Extension Service, they're on Channel 10 and 12 regularly when they are getting ready to give out their free seeds, so if you get in touch with URI Extension Service, find out when they're gonna have their free seed giveaway. My understanding is from, it's been going on for years, Ocean State Job Lot donates everything they don't sell, and, so these seeds are still good, it's not like they've been around for 10 years, so they get sorted by groups and make them available to the public, so this would be something else through a, an agricultural resource that I would think they would be happy if, depending on when they have their event, but it's just something to keep in mind. And I believe it's the, it's the main campus in North Kingston, okay?
That might be good, because although we have, we, we did get, I don't know if you noticed, but all these donations will come to the Board once we have the list, but we did get some seed donations, but, you know, you're never sure if every year or every season you're gonna be able to rely on that, so it might be nice to have something maybe a little more reliable.
And that's why, if, since you're gonna be planting, you're not planting everything at once, you've, you've got like staged planting.
Yeah.
If it's not available for your first planting, maybe second, third, whatever, but they're on television every year, because they're saying, we got the seeds, folks, get in touch with us, and, they give away thousands and thousands of packages.
Were you supposed to do it?
Yeah, yeah.
And then I wanna, oh, one, I have one question as well, and I probably should've asked this first. Are we, or are you, are we, do we have the equipment, or any equipment that might be needed for anything to get the garden going? I know we're doing the back-to-eating method, but I'm thinking, like, someone mentioned raking, if we do need equipment and we have to buy, or even if we get equipment donated, where would we keep that equipment?
I don't think that for our first year, we are going to need equipment donated.
Okay, I like that.
It's more or less like, I have shovels, she has shovels.
Okay, okay.
I have shovels, I have rigs.
Well, that assumption.
When the mom has shovels.
Someone hasn't shoveled, you guys, I can gulag.
It's like the pen.
It's like the pen.
The only equipment that we would need is use of trucks to move the compost and the woodchips, to get them to the property. I mean, I, we have trucks, we can handle the lumber and getting it to the property and stuff like that. Like I said, we do have things lined up, but I have to present you, after you guys document, to get your approvals on those things, and I just wanted to wait till tonight was over before I went forward all that.
Absolutely. Short, Madam Administrator.
So, here's what I, there's so much going on, so number one, I think it's already sort of taking its toll, and I'm ready for that, because in my mind, after the library's there, I've got some lovely visions of this beautiful garden behind the library, so I'm requesting some votes from the Board tonight. One is to approve the plan of, I guess, my extension, Agricultural Commission, to utilize the property on this site. The other is to survey the property, and Tom Ferry and I can work on that right away, so that that doesn't further delay anything, we can take care of that relatively quickly.
That can start even with the.
Yes.
Structure, okay, all right.
And, because this just needs to be done, so for a very.
Mm-hmm.
And then I am basically looking for a request for you to affirm this group as the custodians of it, just for some double duty coverage for them to be on the property and taking place, because I'm assuming some of this is gonna go on the weekends, home ends.
Yes, we already had two visits from our, they had to find us, who are very nice to us when they got there and saw what we were doing.
Well, and, and no one was taking away.
They're doing their job.
Nature, they know that they're legitimately.
I didn't mean to call the police on this.
No, they were awesome when they came up, they were like, oh, well, would you chance this, can I have some of this, can you bring us some of this? And I was like, you have to wait for the Board's approval on this, so.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely a hand during.
What were you saying?
It was very.
Yes, they can, they can take approval. So I'm gonna make a motion that we have the property, 949 Somerset Avenue surveyed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the request to use a portion of the property at 979 Somerset Avenue, Florida Community Garden, based on the plan that was submitted tonight, with periodic updates as you move through it, so it's like progress reports.
Absolutely, we're gonna be happy to come and talk to you all about it all the time.
Could you bring some of the volunteers, too?
Absolutely.
We gotta keep your numbers down here, though.
Yeah, not too many, one or two, some representatives here.
I'm gonna get some press stuff then.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm gonna second this motion if we change it to 949 Somerset Avenue, not 979.
Oh, I didn't even hear the number.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's the right, I'm sorry, it's the right, 979, right? We'll put it up there, wait a minute.
Yes, right on the.
Be out of the river.
No, no, that's Aggie, you can't, you can't go that far, that's Aggie.
So we have a motion in a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and just as we did with the plan, which AgCom recommended for approval, I also think that we should have the vote, the vote, the Board vote, excuse me, to reaffirm or affirm BSA Troop 45 Dyson as the custodians of the Dyson Community Garden.
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
And you know if there's, if there, I'll be volunteering, but if there's anything you need from the Board, I know we have some donations that we'll have to act on and things like that, and then maybe we could have some periodic progress reports, like quarterly, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Something like that.
So when you ask the volunteers, tell them bring their own tools.
Yes.
Bring their own tools, yes.
And one for me.
Let's not show up for projects, they're used to bringing their own.
I'm glad to hear that the police checked on you, because, as you know, there's no trespassing signs all over that property, and we had to put it there, because there was trespassing, peeking in windows, and it's not, we did not feel it was safe for people to be going there, so I'm glad to hear the police.
Yeah, we know now, when we were there, we just called them first, and it's like, just in case you get involved. We have a property, you know, just like, you know.
Well, thank you so much, and more than that, thank you for the work that you put into this, and thank you for the youth that you're involving in this, who will learn hard, I know many of them, most of them, all of them probably already have these traits, but hard work, work ethic, and a sense of community, so it'd be nice.
Mr. Ferry, did you have something?
I'm actually, I'm a character.
Oh, fabulous.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Absolutely.
Something that dawned on me, when the house is new, I know behind the house, there's like a stone.
Terrace.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, that's wonderful.
Is that going as well, or are those stones that are remaining on the property?
Only the house was locked.
Yeah, so that, anything on the land would stack.
Okay, so, would it be possible, like in the future, to ask permission to use those stones for a walkway or stepping stones, or, could we use those?
I was going to say, they would also be town property, and you wouldn't wanna have to go up and buy those stones.
No.
That would be more like a pond, like a pond, not a pond, but just.
As, as Mr. Ferry can tell you, on, as Mr. Ferry can tell you, when the Berkeley-Dyson Bridge was finally removed, the old one.
Yep.
We shared the granite pilings with Berkeley, he is still finding uses for granite pilings.
We're probably gonna be surveyed bounds.
So, so rest assured that those stones are not going anywhere, so.
That would be amazing, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you for this generous offer that you and your troops are gonna do, that the Community Food Bank, Mr. Ferry, has been very active for years.
Yes, absolutely.
I've just been active for the past, maybe a little bit more than a year, and I can tell you, the people at Lincoln's Village appreciate when they get fresh vegetables, so this is very well-welcome for this time.
Yeah, this is gonna be a fantastic project, Rhode Island, we're just really excited to do it, yeah, and it's gonna give the, the youth of the town, not just scouts, but, you know, steam classes from school or teachers can walk over and do project in there, there's just so many uses, and it just gives everybody like a little center, that where everyone belongs, all the time, you know.
I love that. I just asked if you take a picture of Brett reading the gardens in July when it's hot, in the middle of the day.
You'll get Brett watering, it's.
Carrie hauling the jugs back and forth.
Little barrel of the phone call.
Let's see both the stones.
We're taking way under our wing, we're gonna teach everything, give it to Mallory.
Give me a phone.
Good.
One day.
You know, it's great also, because of the conditions that we are all living under right now, this is an outdoor project.
Yes, yeah.
So you don't have to be concerned about spacing per se, obviously, you still maintain space, but it's a great learning experience for children who, in some cases, can't go to school into a physical building, so this is really good, and it's, it's, it's going to continue through the year.
It is, I think it's gonna grow and evolve eventually, which is amazing.
Absolutely.
I will keep you posted on dates, as far as what we've got going on there, okay?
Sounds great, thank you all again.
Thank you, have a wonderful evening.
Yes, I'll call you about the survey.
So I'm going to cross J out of the, I mean, J off the agenda, we did vote on the community garden.
I'm sorry, I don't know why that was there twice.
No, 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 it's okay, I, I, I did that, I own up to that. Madam Administrator, did we have any discretionary spending requests?
We did, yes. No, I know, well done, everybody.
No, I know, well done, everybody.
Good job, department head. Um, and under.
They're looking at scabbing somewhere.
Under public, under public input, did we get any phone calls or emails or any Zoom?
There's, uh, nothing on the chat.
Do we wanna turn that, I'm sorry?
Yes, thank you, I totally forgot.
I just keep forgetting about it because it's.
Hi, everybody, here we are.
That's all, you don't have to.
I'm sorry, Tim, we're, we have the photo.
This is fine. Um, did we have any Zoom chat?
No, it's just, she's just telling us we were on the, so she's been a call.
Okay, alright.
Earlier before.
And no, okay, or calls, perfect. Um, and we will come back to public input, uh, uh, the conclusion of our meeting anyway. Um, now we're moving on to scheduled announcements, Selectman Pacheco.
Yes, so speaking of the food bank, the Town Dyton's Food Bank Distribution will be held next on October seventeenth, twenty twenty, located in the Town Hall lower level as a drive-through. The Lions Club will be having a Chicken and Bobby Two Dinner Drive-Thru Event to be held on Saturday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, with a one p.m. pickup at the Dyton Lions Pavilion behind over here. Tickets are available at Rouge's or through a member of the Dyton Lions Club. Vacancies on various boards and committees in, in the town, maybe we can post the list rather than we go through the whole list of all vacancies.
Yeah, we can, we can repost it, yeah, some things have changed, we'll get that online for everyone.
And the Town, uh, Clerk would like to remind everyone that you need to have your license, if you draw a license, please call the Town Clerk's office or visit the Town Clerk's webpage for an application and a list of required documents. And I just wanna point out since I'm at that age, that if you're seventy or older, uh, you don't have to pay for your license, so that's my blessing. And I just got a new announcement that was not posted on the agenda, I'm gonna read it anyway, I may get in trouble.
No, that's not.
This is from the Dyton Historical Society, and I wanna make it clear that I'm a member and an officer of the Dyton Historical Society. Uh, but they're having a pickup and greet, your own harvest scarecrow patio pot. It's on Saturday, October third, twenty twenty, at Rouge's Farm, that's located fifteen twenty-two William Street, Dyton Ave. Plants will be slightly different from, we have a picture, it will include a pot, not potter, marijuana, but a pot, four plants, a scarecrow, and a mini, uh, pumpkin, and you can pre-register and prepaid at, at the Colne Rouge's, five oh eight six six nine six nine eight eight. It will cost forty dollars, and the proceeds from this benefit the Dyton Historical Society. Pickup is on October third from eight a.m. to four p.m., and if you're interested in this, please act quickly, quickly. I know that there's already been a lot of interest in this and a lot of requests to, uh, for the pots, I think there's gonna be a limit of sixty of these. That's it for the announcement, uh, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanna mention the Lions auction, excuse me, uh, yacht sale Saturday was a great event. It felt so good to go to a public event and be able to move around freely, and, um, they made more money on this than they have in previous auctions, and they're gonna be looking to do this.
That's phenomenal, that's good.
It was, it was great, and there was a constant flow of people coming and going. Uh, I got there and they had people directing traffic, they had to wait for somebody to pull out, but it, it, it was orderly, and it was, it was just great to be outside and doing something.
That's really good because we know with the, um, Couch Up Festival, they couldn't.
And the Oats Festival is gonna happen, so we lost everything this year, but, you know, it started getting back to normal.
I also think we're getting, uh, much more appreciation for our little things. Like I'm trying to find the silver lining in this pandemic, right, but I think definitely the appreciation for the little things, um, has, you know, just like you said, being able to be out and be with people and, um, just do something local.
And that yacht sale, just people driving by, it's like, ooh, what was that, and they would come back, and it was, it was just a chance to do something. Um, I heard something on the news as I arrived here tonight, starting Monday, uh, Governor Baker has said restaurants will be allowed to have seating at the bar, obviously it's gonna be distanced, and they'll be able to accommodate up to parties of ten at his seating, so that's hopefully gonna help some of our restaurants that haven't been able to open. So that's good news.
And the same, even, even though you're sitting at the bar, you're still gonna buy food, so it's not like you can go there past.
Yeah.
Paying for the bar, but you can buy food.
Madam Administrator, with that, I yield the floor for the Town Administrator's Report.
My updates are very quick, uh, the first is just to let you know about the Blue Wave Solar, um, presentation that was here, I don't know now, maybe a couple months, so we are a little too efficient, our energy use is not enough for the kilowatts at the, at the farm to, to, um, qualify for the net metering credits.
There's like a minimum?
There's a, yes.
Oh, okay.
So, and we're out by a lot, and I said, well, I don't think the schools are included in that, let me get some more. So what I have done is reached out to the other districts, the school, then the water district,
Sure.
um, to forward over our, uh, their usage to combine with ours, so that we can still take advantage of the net metering credits, so I just wanted to give you that update.
Did you also reach out, is, can you reach out to the North Dy- Dyton?
I'll reach out to everybody, yes, I thought maybe the schools would have taken everything, but I'll.
Just let's, let's see, okay, okay.
Just put everybody in the same, um.
Were, am I missing anyone's Black and Gold?
No, not the, the TMLP.
There's the North Dyton Fire, the water.
And then the Electric Light Districts, would they be?
No, they like use Town Hall for their meeting, so I don't think that's anything extra. I don't think there's.
Well, I'll reach out to them, it's national grid that they need to have bills with.
Okay, so.
Oh, alright, that eliminates TMLP.
Yeah. So, well done us for being efficient, that's great news that we are, um, the Green Communities Initiatives in, enacted are actually doing their job.
Oh, I know, and speaking of that, Mrs. Brady had said that there were some folks that came by that were gonna start the, um, weatherization, the building weatherization, which was part of the, um, energy reduction plan, so that's.
All of that stuff's actually supposed to be finished October thirtieth, so this will be, um, we'll have finished our designation projects, and we can start going after grant funds, competitive grant funds to the Green Communities.
That's actually earlier than what we thought.
Earlier than anticipated, about a year earlier than anticipated.
Fabulous job, good work to you and, um, Mrs. Brady and Mister, uh, Aggy.
So with Blue Wave, are we talking both, um, the credits and the pilot agreement?
Um, well, I can tell you about the pilot that we're just still working, I met with Carol, and she's comfortable with the terms of that, but it's really for executive now, because you'll be looking at the, executive session now, because you're looking at the real terms, but, um, that's what counts.
And what's the physical location for this, this, um, solar farm?
Hold on, there's, this one is Tremont Street?
It's just middle.
No, this is the farm, the one that's actually.
Tremont in middle?
Yes, I believe so, and that's gonna still be far.
And they're gonna, they're gonna grow crops under the?
Underneath and have livestock, I believe they're having livestock, it's the dual-use project, which I think is right up our alley, because we're farming.
It's the one on agricultural land that's gonna remain agriculture.
Correct, although the chapter, they do have to pay the rollback taxes, um, they can't keep it in chapter sixty-one A. There's legislation pending at the State House right now for that to actually be in allowed use under chapter sixty-one A, but right now it's not, um, so they will have to pay back the rollback taxes, um, so it's actually, it's a pretty good deal for the town. The other item is just a bit of good news, I shared this online, so you may have seen it, um, but we've been graciously given another, um, DER grant, Division of Ecological Resources. This will be used, um, for the Brick Street Culvert, so if you remember at town meeting, I requested funding, uh, through the Finance Committee, and then the town, uh, they graciously, and I thank them so much, au- authorized or allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the stabilization fund to serve as our match to a federal grant that is still pending. With this DER award, if we get the federal grant, we do not need to use our own funds, the entire project will have been grant-funded, and that's including the engineering, design, and permitting work that we took here last year. So I am a super nerd about this project, but it would have been entirely grant-funded if everything goes to plan, and, um, all three levels of government, uh, working together collaboratively, so. This is great news for us, and hopefully more to come with the NIF with grants, but I wanted to let you know that this is, uh.
That's fabulous.
Thank you.
Uh, I have two questions before we move on from the Town Administrator Report, both on Part B. Um, for the DER grant award, uh, did, I'm trying to think. What was the, so a couple residents, I apologize, a couple residents had questions about what the ultimate goal was after the work was completed, and I didn't know if you just wanted to make, you know, comment publicly.
About why we care about this?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, so Brick Street, yes, it's not a very long road, um, there is a tree, uh, excuse me, a, a bridge that is out of service, so we need to fix this culvert and we need to fix the bridge for the road to be opened publicly, and then it serves as the Center Street detour, which is a big deal, because without it, it's like a seven-mile detour, which is convenient for no one, and that means if anything ever happened on Center Street with one of the culverts that are over there, we don't have a great backup plan to keep the flow of traffic, uh, so that's why Brick Street matters to us. There's also incredible amount of flooding over there, um, the street is just not in great shape, the erosion is gone, stormwater management is, uh, nonexistent, and so this culvert is massive, it is seventeen-foot span, uh, and it will better provide, um, a, a better habitat for the creatures that live there, it'll manage ecological resources better, um, and restore the riverbank, so it's, uh, it's like a very sciencey one, but we benefit because it helps our infrastructure.
Thank you.
No problem.
And we, doesn't, uh, did you have anything else, I'm sorry?
Nope, just that I'm a nerd, I'm very excited about this.
No, I like, oh, my other question, I'm sorry, part two of my question was, I know that we keep, you keep a running tally of the grants that we've received sort of since you came here, so including like the Green Communities, how, what are we up to?
Including Green, I did, I don't include Green.
Well, you should, I mean, it all started like twenty seconds.
Um, the ones that I take partnership when, it's, uh, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
So like nine hundred, nine, we couldn't get up to a million?
So Green Communities is one forty-three.
Where's my sense of competition?
Green Communities is one forty-three, so that would bring you to nine or something.
Nine or ten or something, yeah, that's crazy.
Wait, when we had a chance, could you check with, um, uh, Chris to see what in total, because I bet we're close to a million.
Oh, yeah, I'm, but there's probably thing, we're not even counting the little, like, serpent grants we get, you know, like the ten thousand, eight thousand dollars serpent technical assistance.
Where the money doesn't really come here, it goes there, but what do we benefit, absolutely, absolutely.
But it's still a benefit, yeah.
Yeah, we get a lot for it, so.
There's twenty thousand from Green Communities right there for two different ones that I can recall, yeah, it's probably gotta be well over that, there's probably stormwater ones.
Well, we have strong one too.
Correct.
Well, and that's why, like, these, I call them building blocks for future grants, right, we have our ADA Plan, we have our MVP Plan, we have our HMP Plan, you have the Community Compact that you're, you're actively taking care of, um, you have all the right things in all the right places, so you're able to maintain a competitive edge, and then when you have a special project, and I'll just use Brick Street, the ecology there is special, it's salt water mixing with cold water, so the state's like, ooh, yes, we want to protect that. Um, the governor, he's very, very interested in climate change management, so we have the Town River, we are in a prime position to take advantage of those. What we need to give us a kind of a shining star in our application is the MVP, he took care of that, um, so. I thank the residents for always voting for the matching portion of this, and, um, it really means a lot, uh, in the grand scheme of things, and you can get a lot of projects done, um, the sidewalks, the sidewalks alone, all grant-funded, I saw some chatter on Facebook, that is not taxpayer-funded, they were, uh, it's the first four projects on the town's prioritization plan have been completed, and it was through grant money. So, um, we have beautiful sidewalks, because we're, we're primed, so, that's the other thing, you put together a priori prioritization plan, which helps, uh, promote you, so.
Are we gonna submit anything for our Community Compact Cabinet this year?
We can't, because our open space plan is not complete.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, do you want, I'll give you an update on that.
That needs to be completed, and then we can, um, open the doors, but I am working with, um, Mister Kitchen at DR, the business manager, to work on another, uh, Community Compact IT Grant for something they need at the middle school.
Okay.
That's what I was complaining about, that I X out of by accident, uh, at the start of the meeting.
So we are now aware of the Open Space Committee of, I'm a non-voting member, um, of the need to get the plan done. The plan is actually pretty much done.
This was the third part of our best.
Yes, so that's why she's saying we can't, cause we didn't finish all three.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna finish it up first.
And you remember, this all started with Selectman Taylor, and the Open Space Committee wasn't even like functioning at that point, and he got it going, and then, um, you know, now we're sort of taking the baton and running with it based on that work, um, but we have had, um, a forum issue, and so that's why later tonight, we're going to be appointing a new member, and so that should resolve that issue. We probably have one or two meetings max before that can, um, plan will be, I don't know how it works, does it come to this board?
Planning Board.
Planning, thank you, and it becomes part of the master plan, you are correct, um, so Open Space should, um, within the next two months, I think, um, approve it, hopefully, send it to Planning Board, um, and then it'll become part of that assup, and then we can think about the next round of Community Compact.
And along those lines, along the requirements for the, uh, year we're in right now, which began July first and ends June thirtieth, the MS four is that we have a complete inventory of all open space, and a written, um, maintenance plan for it, so like, we got trails.
Sure.
Uh, I've got, uh, I've had to get it for the parks and, uh, rec,
Uh-huh.
and I have all of that, including the maintenance plan. Um, I have a partial list of, uh, vehicles, but I need other equipment that we don't register, and, uh, Mister, uh, Levy Leonard's working on that, and also, uh, I have a list of buildings, um, town-owned buildings, and the maintenance part, I can give a statement from Jim on that, but I noticed that there was open space listed, and I thought, well, I don't know if we have a full committee yet, but it'll be an inventory, and actually, that can come right off of the records we have from the, uh, uh, the Land Use Committee.
That, so I meant to say that, um, we actually, so we do have an open space inventory, we definitely, we, we don't have a maintenance plan yet, so we'll have to work on part two, um, but we worked with Mrs. Beauregard to get an inventory of the open space parcels, I have that Excel spreadsheet, so anytime you need.
And that would include what the Trails Committee is responsible for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, any open space recreational.
Maintenance space, maybe something as easy as periodic trimming.
Yeah, yep, that, and I said, I apologize, I say we don't have a maintenance plan, um, I've only been given the later parts of the open space plan from when I joined the committee, in the ten or nine or ten parts before, there probably is a maintenance plan, so I'll make sure that we get the inventory and the maintenance plan to the Stormwater Committee.
Uh, yes, because I'll put it in the folder for the, uh, upcoming, uh, next year's, uh, report.
Absolutely.
We will get that, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and some more good news tonight, twenty twenty hasn't brought much, but no old business. And we're gonna.
Again, we appreciate the little things.
Correct, going back to that mantra, um, under new business, um, we have some appointments to the Human Rights Committee, um, and so I will entertain motions to appoint, um, the, the, uh, mentioned members. And we should have received everyone's.
Yes, you have everyone's, um, form and, uh, information.
Oh, okay, I know what you're gonna say.
Since you're in luck.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I'll step down in second.
Mister Chairman, I move that the following individuals be appointed to the Human Rights Committee, Jill Gero, Sean Cassidy, Kristen Pyers, Richard Olney Jones, and Kenneth Pacheco as an associate, non-voting member.
I will step down and second that motion, discussion?
I just wanna comment, I looked at all the resumes, they're, they're pretty well impressive, except for mine, all the other members.
Diverse, I'm just kidding, I'm just teasing you.
Really is a diverse group of people, and I, I look forward to, uh, someone that this motion passes, worth one of them.
But ironically, their diversity and your lack of diversity means you actually bring diversity to that committee in a twist of irony, so, that's good.
I think I'm the oldest person, and so as far as age discrimination, I represent that.
Check, we checked that, not the age discrimination, just the age.
Somebody's gonna take care of us, right?
That's right.
Anything else under discussion for this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain.
The ayes have it, that motion passes, just one, uh, thing, Mrs. Brady, I believe Kristen is spelled with an two I's, not an E. So for Kristen Pyers, just for her form, uh, that will have her sign, yep, thank you. And so it looks like that committee has a forum, Selectman Pacheco, I know you want three more members, but if you wanted to have like an organization.
I'm gonna get in touch with all the, uh, the members and just coordinate and schedule a meeting, I, I realize I'm not the, I'm an acting member, I'm an associate member, so I can't vote, but I'll organize it, I'll set it up, I'll see to it that they, I'll elect a chairperson, you know, that kind of stuff, and, 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 so.
Awesome, and then eventually, whenever you have admissions, whenever, I say you, whenever the committee has a mission statement, can we get a copy of that and we'll, 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 we'll.
Send it back to the board, and we can discuss it and make sure that the board's.
Thank you, that's awesome, good news.
It is.
We also have some appointments to the Municipal Building Study Committee this evening, so I will entertain motions.
I'm gonna make a motion that James, Aggie, Mallory, Emerson, and Robert Mendon, uh, be appointed to the Municipal Building Study Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, under discussion, my question is, everyone is a voting member, correct?
Correct, and we also have, uh, one more person interested, but we didn't get it in time, uh, so we'll put it on for next meeting.
That's good, is it, okay, maybe I, I won't get ahead.
Mister McGee.
Oh, okay.
I know, thank you, Mister McGee.
It just really, um, not to get, I don't wanna give aside, cause we have to vote, but it's really nice to see, I know we always talk about like, oh, we want new faces and we, but it is also encouraging to see when people, the same people really care, like, we all serve in different capacities, um, and so Mister McGee, um, I don't believe has ever been an elected official, um, but he has been an.
Oh, so this is the official you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, Dennis McGee, excuse me, but he has given to the town in so many different ways, just like on a volunteer basis, and it just, it's really nice to see.
That's great.
Um, so we have a motion in a second on these appointments to the Municipal Building Study Committee, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. We also have, um, we're gonna switch to appointments on the Agricultural Commission, um, we did briefly discuss this, and, um, Mrs. Katadia, um, who I spoke to, would like to become, go from a voting member to a non-voting associate member, and Leah Hurre would go from a non-voting associate member to a voting member, so, and that would count towards the forum. Um, and so, uh, those are the, uh, I don't know, they're already appointed, but those are the. And so those are the, I don't know, they're already appointed, but those are the change status that were requested this evening.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the change in status of the following members of the Agricultural Commission. Barbara Catabia will go from a voting member to a non-voting member. And Leah Harrell will become a voting member of the commission.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. And I just wanted to thank my colleagues. That committee has some important work coming up on their agricultural work plan for the town, so that would be great. Thank you.
Is the Human Rights Committee full, or did we make it seven?
No, it's seven, plus non-voting.
Yeah, so there's still three voting members that can apply.
Oh, okay.
Yep, not full yet.
Okay.
Next, we're gonna consider the appointment of Kevin Smith to the Open Space Committee, and again, I had alluded that we have, the Open Space Committee had been having some quorum issues. This would resolve that issue. The other thing I'd like to mention is, I know that the Open Space Committee is towards the end, with the tail end of their open space and recreation plan. However, just the interaction that I've had with Mr. Kevin Smith, he has a lot of energy, and he has a lot of enthusiasm, and I think that he'll be a good member, even beyond the open space and recreation thing. So when we talk about a maintenance plan, I think he'll have some good input on things like that. So I look forward to seeing what he brings to the table as a member of his.
And he'll have some double duty with maintenance.
With you.
I know you, yes, you've not, he's a member of the EDA Commission, he had a first meeting last week. He's very proactive, very energetic, and I look forward to work with him on the EDA Commission. I know I'm a non-voting member, but he was very improved, and I see him doing the same thing on this committee here, so I think it's a great choice. I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Kevin Smith to the Open Space Committee.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Madam Administrator, is there anyone you could turn the arrow like?
So I thought I did, I definitely did, but I will figure that out.
I just, I think he was, I, I think he, you're a little warm. Are you warm?
I am.
Mr. Pacheco?
There's no screen, is there?
You're okay in here? Oh, okay, I thought you were trying to motion to me that you were hot, I apologize.
No, I'm just stretching to...
Oh, okay, all right, my apologies. I think we're okay, Madam Administrator. Thank you, though.
Yeah, I'm just stretching to stay.
Next, we have the, to consider the appointment of Tara Schaper to the Dyton Cultural Council. And I know that this appointment is very important, because I know Kristen Kearns, the chairperson, had reached out and expressed some concern over, yeah, not having a forum as well.
So I'll make a motion that Tara Schaper be appointed to the Dyton Cultural Council.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. And I did just wanna thank all of our new appointees for their service. And now we're gonna consider the resignation, or accept the resignation of Mr. Nicholas Vaz from the Historical Commission and from the Community Preservation Committee.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the resignation of Nicholas Vaz from the Historical Commission and the CTC Committee.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanna briefly say that I worked with Nicholas on the Historical Commission. He was very proactive, very supportive of the history of the town as a new resident. Unfortunately, he's left the town. He is planning to move back to Dyton, which means, that's great, great news, we're gonna have a great resident again. I'm upset, sad that he had to leave town, but he just is a great, great person. And he'd be sadly missed. I'm speaking for all the members of the Historical Commission, had I spoke to many of them about Mr. Vaz leaving, they're all saddened by this. So now, if this is approved, they're seeking two members now to join the Historical.
If we could update that list, yeah, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanna state, all of these appointments we're making tonight, I didn't tell any of those people that the committee only needs twice a year.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. I believe I saw a, and I am praying to God that I am correct about this. I think I saw something come across from the press release that the fire department had done earlier in the month about this being emergency preparedness month. I'm in the right month?
You are correct, this is the month.
Okay, good. It's September. And I know we're a little late, because I found out about it late, so that's why we didn't do it at our first meeting. But Selectment Goulart, that's why this is on the agenda, and if you don't mind reading the proclamation. And if we have changes before we vote, we're happening to make votes as well.
Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has underscored the importance and effectiveness of a culture of preparedness that is supported and strengthened by individuals, communities, governments, businesses, and organizations. And whereas the contributions of our residents and town agencies continue to save lives and reinforce our response to the pandemic. And whereas the municipalities experienced with and susceptibility to other hazards such as severe weather, floods, blizzards, and hurricanes, compounded by the continued risk of terrorist attacks, pandemics, and other disasters, both natural and man-made, demonstrates the ongoing need for the town's residents and organizations to prepare for a broad range of emergencies. And whereas the Town of Dyton Police Department, Fire and Ambulance Services, Health Department, Highway Department, Sewer Department, Conservation Commission, and other outside partners have the responsibility to protect safety, public health, and property, and minimize injuries and the loss of life by preparing for, responding to, and recovering from disasters and emergencies, as well as support personnel, family, and community preparedness in the town to build resilience, help reduce loss of life, and minimize the economic impacts of disasters in our community. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident, organization, and governmental entity of the town. And all I urge to make preparedness a priority by creating or updating a disaster plan, including preparations needed during the COVID-19 public health emergency, building an emergency supply kit, and preparing homes and businesses for all types of emergencies. And whereas all residents of the town are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities and use the preparedness resources at www.mass.gov/gob/ready, R-E-A-D-Y. Therefore, we, the Board of Selectment of the Town of Dyton, on this 23rd day of September 2020, recognize the month of September 2020 to be Emergency Preparedness Month, and urge all citizens of the Town of Dyton to make, to take cognizant of this event and participate fittingly in its observance, and it is, will be signed by the members of the board.
Do you have any changes?
Yeah, I'm a clerk, not a secretary.
Oh, okay, there you go. I knew that, there has to be something, right?
What was changed?
The bottom was...
Clerk, it's just the title.
Okay, yeah.
Did you have any changes, Selectment Pacheco? Um, I, before we take a vote on this, I did just wanna thank Mrs. Kirwin and Mrs. Brady, who came up with this of their own device. I think we have some legal scholars in our Board of Selectmen's office. But in all seriousness, thank you very much, this was very comprehensive, to say the least, so. And with that, I will enter motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to approve this declaration and recognize September 2020 as Emergency Preparedness Month.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second with the change in title for Selectment Goulart on the final document. Any further discussion?
Just that we will have Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kirwin be the monitors of whatever months are coming up. And if they're appropriate, to prepare a document so that we can recognize that.
Yeah, I caught this way, I apologize.
Next month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay.
And September is also Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
So we can do that.
I've seen signs for that.
Yeah, it's yellow, yellow driven, the color.
Yes, I saw, I've seen a lot of those. Okay, we will note this for, for next year.
November is...
See, Mrs. Brady, when you do a good job, you get more fun.
Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, which is, the color is purple for November.
Fabulous.
And those are the one thing I'll...
All right, we can, we'll do some digging, so we can have that at the beginning of the...
We have two people in charge, we have two people in charge.
Thank you both. And now we're gonna have a...
Are you gonna call them?
Oh, sorry, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion. It wouldn't be a more selecting meeting without me forgetting ones, right?
Oh, that reminds me of something.
You have a throat lozenge for me, please, I've been dying over here.
I have a presentation, this is gonna help you.
Okay.
Selectment Pacheco and I have periodically looked across the board at one another, and so...
This is under $25. I assure you of that.
Well, actually, and the pencil was actually from the state lottery.
We're gonna have to...
I don't play golf, but I watch it, so I'm like the key.
We're gonna keep this here, because the whole thing will be that I forget to bring it to the next meeting, so it'll stay here.
Yeah, remember the last time I put a box of pens on the show?
Yeah, you don't know, I don't know where that is. It's gonna be in one of our drawers.
So when, when, when you don't...
I love this.
When you don't use the tool that you've been presented with, Selectment Pacheco and I will be leaning past you, looking at one another, shaking our heads.
You guys crack me up.
Great.
And let's have a lively colleagues' discussion on a conservation stormwater agent. We do have a, well, let me, Madam Administrator, did you wanna set the scene first?
I do wanna set the scene.
Okay, you have the floor.
So our illustrious conservation agent, who is Mr. Mello, Charlie Mello, has been serving in this capacity, but also serving double duty, because he is a Conservation Commission member. So he had some personal stuff to take care of, and the commission has decided that they are looking for professional staff for a conservation agent, and I thought with where the town is going, it might be advantageous for us to create a position that smooches together conservation and stormwater duties.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes.
But only to ask a question.
Okay.
I know you're saying, create a conservation stormwater agent position. I have heard many times, and I probably should have done the digging, and I apologize that I didn't. I have heard many times that this position existed sometime in the past, and I don't know if anyone is aware.
Conservation agent.
Yeah, so the stormwater agent part would be new.
That would be new.
But this position was existed.
So the conservation agent position had existed, and I'm just saying it might be, or I'm asking you to discuss whether or not you think it would be advantageous to, as we're going out for a new position, if we are, to merge some stormwater duties with it. So I've put together a...
But no one's doing this job right now? Like, we don't, no one's working as a conservation agent for the Town of Dyton?
They haven't since, well...
No, he's more of like a, his title is Secretary.
When we, when we lost our conservation agent, she was excellent. If she went out to do a site inspection, I mean, she had the technical background, you name it. And when she left, she wasn't replaced.
Okay, that's, that's, my apologies, I didn't, I just wanted to understand.
That's when Charlie said, well, you know, it's one of these things, well, until we get one, I'll do it.
How many years is that, poor guy?
That's the Dyton way, it's the Dyton way, so I apologize.
No, that's fine. So where we are with the MVP plan, with stormwater, like, we're very involved with it. I thought it would be fortuitous to merge some duties there. I know that the Board of Health assists in stormwater management practices. It's about three hours for Todd every week, but with everything that's going on, obviously, he is being pulled in many, many directions due to COVID pandemic issues. So I thought I would present this. I did run the, oh, I sent this to the Stormwater Committee, but it is my understanding they have not met on this yet, because they haven't had time. They're, they're just meeting at another time. But I did send this over to Charlie Mello for his stamp of approval, and he said that he was 100% with it. And, you know, the commission obviously hasn't met, their meeting is next week, but verbally, from just a couple of people, they were okay with it. So I put this forward to you, but I'm not expecting you to act on it tonight.
No, no, I, I understand.
But just to review where the board is looking to go with this, and that the commission is asking to hire a conservation agent.
So how I wanna do this is, I just have a couple of questions, I guess, and then maybe a statement or two, and then I wanna, my colleagues can ask their questions and make whatever, if they have statements. My first question is, we're not shooting for the, and I feel like I know what you're gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm not, I don't have a plan for this, I'm waiting for you to weigh in, but we're not talking about the special town meeting. We're talking about annual town meeting, if this, we were going to do this. I don't wanna use the word created, because this did exist before, not as a stormwater...
Well, the Conservation Commission is asking for an agent.
They don't have anyone right now.
Charlie is stepping back from what he has done to bolster the conservation's paperwork, and they're asking to hire somebody. So yes, it would be, we could transfer funds. I know, I know that they're not looking...
You know what I'm gonna say, right?
Yeah, new funds at a special town meeting, but I think where somebody's health is involved, I think they would understand.
And then my other question is, Selectment Goulart, you had said that this position did exist before, conservation, that we had a conservation agent, the stormwater thing is new, but this position did exist before in years past. At some point, did that money come out of their budget for this? I know Mr. Mello certainly does not get paid a conservation agent.
She did, though.
She did, so, but this, so this money eventually came out of the budget?
Was out, I'm sure, because there's only $4,800 in there, and I'm certain she was paid more than that.
These are cl, I just need to ask these.
Oh, yeah, yes.
For that kind of expertise.
And a conservation agent should be. He's not been doing the job of a, he does a lot of work, but not that.
She had the education and background. That's why we lost her. She had an opportunity, you know?
Yeah, I understand. I, that, those are my questions for now. Selectment Pacheco?
So in the past, we had a conservation agent, how many hours did that person?
It was part-time. I don't know the exact number of hours. It was a part-time position.
Could we, could we look?
Sure, I'm not even sure what year that was.
And I'm not saying we, I mean, like, if conservation knows that they could, we need that info.
About when?
And maybe salary and all those appropriate questions.
I believe...
Linda may know.
I know I was on the Finance Committee.
When was this, like, 2006, 2005?
Either it was when I was on the Finance Committee and/or the first time I was on the Board of Selectmen, which would have been seven to 10. But if you ask Bill or Charlie, they'll remember her name, and they should be able to find the record.
Okay, I'll find that.
Could we give that name maybe to like, in accounting, if we have at least a name?
I'll be able to find it with our...
Yeah, we'll be able to, for some reason, I wanna say Lisa, but I'm not positive that was her first name.
I thought, some, I feel like someone told me Rachel, but I'm probably making that up. I probably really am making that up.
Somebody told me Julie, so I don't know.
We'll hire all three.
Yeah.
I actually said, what do you think, Charlie, about the hours? I said, in my mind, I just came up with 20 hours for conservation and five for stormwater, but again, this is me throwing stuff on a paper, a piece of paper, for you to weigh in, knowing full well that you would have opinions on stormwater.
I almost think the stormwater part, at times, could be more. Because if she's not out doing inspections or attending their meetings, then she may have more time available. So maybe we can, if it's approved, we can have some flexibility in the budget.
Well, they would, they would do all of it all the time.
Well, even if we split it 50/50, you know, it's like a person doing the two jobs. At certain times, she's, if she's out doing inspections, she's gonna be spending more time on conservation. But if she's not doing that while working on something, then we've got, obviously, stormwater work.
Well, and I don't even think it necessarily has to be a strict accounting of 20 hours is dedicated to conservation and five is...
That's what I meant about flexibility.
Exactly, so I completely agree that this is the role, and whenever it happens, it happens, but it's a, I just said 25 hours.
So what's gonna happen with the health agent's hours that he gets for stormwater?
I mean, my thought would be it's taken, he's no longer in charge of that.
Yeah, because you're creating a...
And this person would be sort of how I am to you, that the Stormwater Committee and the Conservation Commission set the policy directives, and that person goes out and implements what's going on, or investigates for you.
Would, would stormwater committee still have administrative support?
You took my question right out of my mouth.
From the office manager?
Um, I feel like it's fluid, because maybe this person can pull it off, the right person can, but I, I, you know, I'm not sure. Probably, though, there's somebody that needs to put meetings together, um.
Host meetings take minutes.
Those duties wouldn't change. The office manager would continue doing the minutes for the stormwater committee.
For those one, yeah.
Well, well, again, it would, it's gonna depend on the workload of this person.
I think I actually. I think I actually did write coordinate meetings.
But, but my thought on this is, so, and correct, maybe I'm not thinking of this correctly. Um, Mr. Pillings works with the office manager, like, when he needs, I assume.
Yes.
Clerical stuff, like, like a letter typed, or, like, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'm thinking that, and I'm not giving my opinion, cause I don't feel like I know enough about, like, how many hours uh the office manager dedicates to stormwater, I don't know any of that information, but I'm thinking that this conservation and stormwater agent would still have to rely a little bit on whoever that office manager is, like, we don't really want the, do we want the stormwater conservation agent typing their own letters? I don't, I feel like that should be.
I, I, that's what I, I think it's gonna, it's, it's gonna evolve, it's gonna depend on what the workload for that new job is. Uh, if that person could attend a stormwater meeting and do minutes, uh, even occasionally, that would be fine. But what we've got to know is that both the Conservation Commission and the stormwater committee is going to have some kind of support, no matter who's doing this, so.
Well, like, the data you were discussing earlier for the NFTs permit, uh, MS four.
MS four.
This person would compile that, that would be their job to put together and get ready to, to put in a permit.
But, but that's like, to me, and I think we, we would both agree, that's like high level, like, that's.
Yeah, but.
Not clerical work, like, they're using their expertise.
Correct, correct.
The MS four isn't one person.
Mm-hmm.
No.
It, because I'm, I'm hoping to get that in the email out tonight, there, over the period of the year, there were so many things that have to be tracked. Now, obviously, Mr. Ferry, uh, Mr. Agia, Mr. Pillings, um, access to the previous year's report, like, when I got to a point today, it was see last year's report, and I said, it's blank, which meant it got filled in and submitted, but it didn't end up on the worksheet. So I quickly emailed Ross and said, can you find this for me? Um, and so the person who provides support is um also a good resource. And yes, I would hope eventually that this person uh would be the person that takes all the data from my.
Absolutely.
Hand-scribbled report and can, or at least can verify it, or at least if I say, you know what, we need an update from this committee on a particular thing, um, they could follow that up, so, as I said, somebody's gonna learn stormwater eventually.
Uh, Selectman Pacheco, I wanna throw it back to you if you have any questions, but what I did wanna say in just a broad, um, and again, we need specifics, we need, we have questions about hours, we have questions about, um, like, the divvying up of hours, it sounds like there's some fluidity, but how many will be, um, so we, we have a black box of information that I think we need to clarify. Um, but what I have said broadly, and I've been very open with you just in like our conversations together, probably when you first even got here, but shortly thereafter, I've always said that we needed a conservation agent. And this is twenty, you know, seventeen, I think you arrived, um, so we've needed it uh for a while. Um, so broadly, I support it, but I definitely have, um, we need some more specifics, and I know this is in the, you're just gauging our um interest, so I understand why this is on here.
Yeah, and we're gonna have this on our agenda for the next meeting, because.
You'll give us feedback, right?
The committee is, I, it's gone out, I think it's already gone out, and they've been told, please look at this and be prepared to discuss it.
And then we'll get feedback from Conservation as well.
Yeah, they, they just haven't met.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand, I understand.
Well, conservation.
Just like an advise and, cause I have no idea, like, in terms of a split, like, I'm okay with the fluidity that we're discussing, but like, if we were going to have uh hour, specific hours dedicated, like, I don't feel like I have enough knowledge of how many, how many, how much time.
So.
That's why I mean it will evolve, yeah.
Yeah, so, but that's also why, I mean, if you can advise us, the stormwater committee can, you know, give us some information.
The other thing I will say is, absolutely, positively, we need to do something for the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
If there is concern about instituting this position as it's currently structured, I am willing to say reinstitute conservation, we can wait on stormwater, cause right now, I've got all these things out that I'm asking people, like I asked you about your committees tonight.
Yep.
Um, it's not crunch time right now, because that's the stuff that I need for after June thirtieth for next year, so I would not want to see this fail.
Oh, no, it has to pass, I agree.
Because. If a combination position can't be approved now, I would really say reinstate conservation, they need help.
And the wo, and I just, just from a, I don't know what the strategic point of view, I think to say reinstate is the right phrasing, because people need to understand, because I was not aware that this existed until I started having conversations after being elected back in twenty sixteen. People should understand that, yes, this existed before, and then, as you said, the um employee went to another municipality, and we never filled the vacancy, and then the funding was taken, so we see what happened, we just need to explain it um to people, and I think they'll get it. And I think people should understand why a conservation agent is needed in a busy town, where there's a lot of building, people are home right now, people are building stuff, people are doing work in their yards, they are.
Adding.
Now is the ti, correct, expanding their um structures.
Outdoor living.
Now is the time to do that stuff. People are busy, and I'm sure the Conservation Commission.
We're gonna have more solar farms, we've got, we've got a forty B, a large forty B that's still in the hearing stage.
Exactly.
Those are all gonna require um inspections by people who are qualified to do inspections.
Field, yeah. Fieldwork. I um, I just wanna clarify, so the Conservation Commission did meet to request that we reinstate, they didn't, that's not their words, but to request that they go, they be given a stormwater, um, conservation agent?
Sure.
I spoke to them saying, hey, can we merge this, the, this position with stormwater, because that's the direction we're going? And then I worked with Charlie on this, I devised this with a couple of other towns that have conservation agents that, that stormwater's part of their duties, just by nature of the job, uh, so that's what this is based off of, and um, Selectman Pacheco, I apologize, cause we sort of hijacked your opportunity to ask questions, so that's all I wanted to say to clarify.
No, I was just about to give the floor to him, don't apologize to him, he's gonna get the floor.
No, Brett, Brett did it, Brett did it.
You're up the floor, sorry.
Yeah, I just feel I need more information.
Need to.
Like you said on this, I was unaware that we had a conservation agent, it sounds like maybe ten, fifteen years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And I appreciate all the work that Charlie Mello has done for the Conservation, he's done a, a lot of work, and I understand his concerns about uh wanting to give that up uh at this stage, uh, right, I need more information. We're gonna be asking the taxpayers in November to create, I know it's the position we had in the past, but we haven't utilized it for years, uh, to create a, a new position where we don't even know what our tax revenue is gonna, is gonna be, so I definitely need more information. I'm reluctant to give twenty-five hours, I understand, uh, by reducing the hours, we mean I get the person that we want for this position? So that has to be a concern, I'd wanna find out how many hours that the prior conservation agent worked. I mean, this is, you're talking twenty-five hours, which means benefits and everything else, and it's uh maybe a hot sell for the uh, for the townspeople, we're doing it at a special town meeting, it sounds like that's what we're gonna do.
FinCom will have some comments.
Yes, uh, so I, I know how reluctant they've, uh, FinCom has been, I'm just, on the ADA coordinator going from two thousand to three thousand dollars, uh, so I, I think that they will have some concern on this, but I, I would want uh more information before I can say that I would uh support something like this.
Mm-hmm. No, I think that, you have a lot of the same questions I have, um, and I think that's fine, and um, one suggestion with not, without having any information is, um, as you said, um, that if the split part is the hangup, we'll just do conservation, we might wanna look into starting them off at like nineteen hours. I know there's, there's an issue um that you raised of like, oh, if they don't have enough hours and aren't benefited, could we get a qualified candidate or the best candidate, um, but I think these are things that we should discuss, uh, you know, once we have more information.
We might be able to also have a shared position, just like our veterans' agent.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, everybody has to do conservation, everybody has to do stormwater, and there might be some collaboration, uh, uh, so that the person would end up with a job and a decent salary, if it was, you know, um,
Shared.
Close to full-time or full-time, and we would, we would split, uh, you know, the workload accordingly, but um, that's a possibility.
There's also, no, you have the floor.
Yeah, and so we should check to see, uh, towns that, uh, vocal, that, yeah, that uh may have a part-time uh conservation agent, that we might wanna join up over there, so.
So I, I don't.
No, that's a good point. No, 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 that's a good point, Selectman Pacheco. Yes, Madam Administrator?
I just wanna be clear that, um, the con, so this is a need, like, we're not just going to town meeting because we want to, like, Charlie's not going to be doing the work anymore.
Sure. Yes.
Okay, and um, what was my other thought?
But, but what, ju, just to play the devil's advocate, I, that's our, that's how we think of things, how a resident, I think, would think of things, it's like, oh, but this didn't exist before, and why can't someone just be the secretary like Mr. M, I think that was the official title.
Oh, so, and I would. So I was just about to.
They don't understand that it's a, it's evolved, and it's like a slightly di, not a different role, cause he did a lot of that work too, but it's, it's more than that.
It's more.
It's part of the development process. It's site visits, it's in field inspections, it's locations of wetlands, it's monitoring of mitigation.
Correct.
It's a technical position.
Correct.
Monitoring of mitigation.
If all we were trying to do was have somebody take minutes, we could almost ask anybody, hey, we get a job that's extra hours.
Exactly.
Yep. Anybody.
Exactly, I've done it before.
But, this is a technical position, you, you just, you just don't say, hey, I want that job, I think I, I think I could do it.
Correct.
You've gotta go out and do inspections and know what you're looking for, because you're gonna have to write reports, and votes of that commission are gonna be based on the work you did in the field.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there also, there's like a legal aspect to it as well, because they can use their reports to stop development, um, any, any sort of like expansion on outdoor living or your property, and so if you get called
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
to go to court, you need to be able to defend, well, there's a spotted turtle or what have you that lives here.
That actually happens.
Too close to a vegetated wetland.
Right, so, um, it's, it's not just for anybody.
My. I didn't wanna cut you off, no.
No, go ahead.
Um, I also wanted to ask, so, and I feel like this is a cart before the horse, um, there was some, there was some funds in the budget for like the perk agent conservation, like, how are we gonna, how would we, I know it can be done, I'm not acting like a defeatist, but like, these are the things that we're gonna have to resolve, right?
So, if Charlie's not going to do it anymore, there's uh definitely money available to cover what we discussed, I think you're talking about what we discussed during the budget season
Mm-hmm.
of ref, of funding, um, money that was in a Board of Health line.
Correct.
Into conservation. Now, this board went back and made a recommendation, FinCom just never did, uh, it was an oversight, and went to town meeting with a budget that didn't include that. We'd be able to absorb that cost, because Charlie's not going to fill out the whole year doing this, so that's all set, and then you would go to town meeting and fill the line, because now you're funding a position.
Okay.
A professional position, um, for this, so it's.
I understand, that's actually easier than that.
But by the time we get to town meeting, if we do this in, what, November is the date, we, half a year is.
Gone by, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the other thing too, with this uh COVID thing, um, we don't know what's gonna be coming down the pipe that is going to have to be done, it, but, but the point is, case is coming before conservation, you can't say, well, we can't do it cause of COVID.
Correct, yeah, that's not a valid excuse.
So I wanna ask a stupid question.
No such thing.
Has uh Charlie Mello been doing this as like a freebie, is that?
Essentially, very, very, uh, a bargain, a complete and total bargain.
Essentially. Yes.
I mean, they all share duties for field inspections and site works, but he, he processes all the NOIs, he writes the decisions, he files, uh, he does the
It's a lot of work, so.
Agendas, he does the minutes, he signs off on decisions, uh, he's done quite a bit for the town, um.
It was, as I said, and uh she left, and this was temporary until we got somebody, years later.
Not so temporary.
No, no.
So, ju, from my point of view then, uh, I think I've been spoiled by, or we've been spoiled, because Charlie's been doing this, I've had some, uh, Titan Star Society, if I can mention that, has some deals with Charlie Mello on wetlands and stuff like that, he was very efficient, very qualified, and uh, so the town has been spoiled, because it hasn't cost us that much money.
Yes.
Uh, but now, since he, he's no longer gonna be able to do it, we have to seriously take a look at this.
Mm-hmm.
I'm concerned about the hours, but let's get some information, more information.
I agree.
And perhaps we can use office at the next, you think we'll have this?
Yep.
So this is my, well, this is what I.
And then we can, maybe we'll have some info from Stormwater Committee and Conservation Commission.
Yeah, it's gonna be on our next, it'll be on our next meeting, we haven't set the date, but we, we'll get it done.
So I'm gonna do a salary survey, an hours survey, a um, like, number of hours that these other communities.
Sure.
Dispense, and then a regional question, or, you know, just feeling, uh, then out, shared services.
Sure.
Shared services.
And to have a better picture of the financial impacts of something like this, I think it might be beneficial to delineate, like, for example, um, not everything is gonna be an added cost, because like, the health agent has three hours doing stormwater, that would go to the, so it's not, uh, do you get what I'm trying to say?
It's shifting of allocation, allocated resources.
So can we, can we factor that in, so we have like a bottom line number of this is the added cost to the taxpayer of this position were to be created?
But that.
Minus benefits, I feel like that's hard to.
So, is the health agent having his hours reduced then?
I was just gonna say that assumes that those hours would be reduced, so the question now becomes, does the health agent still need those hours for health duties?
So that's how, that's the only way we say it.
But that's a little bit beyond what we're here for tonight, but I'll, I will factor that in.
Well, that, okay, yeah, that's definitely outside the scope, but then we would say, how was he doing it before?
Yes, so I will.
So, I mean.
I will factor that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
This is Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take under advisement for future discussion, the job description that would reinstate the conservation agent and the proposed combined position conservation slash stormwater agent uh, at a future meeting after the uh information has been gathered.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Yep, Madam Administrator?
Selectman Goulart, may I attend or just be made aware of when that stormwater meeting is? I'd just like to go, if that's okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
And we have, we have pizza, and I'm eating.
Yeah, no one ever told me that, I'll be there too.
I, that was a happy surprise one day, and I was like, you have lunch?
Don't tell me that.
Well, we'd have to know ahead of time, uh, Dr. Z, because we have to, we, no, cause we have to observe, uh, separation, right?
You know, I like pizza. Oh, yes, okay, I understand.
So, the town administrator has already spoken up, and if she's the one that makes the number we have to deal with, well,
Sorry.
Just, just establishing priorities.
So next on the agenda, uh, we have uh a letter from the Board of Health, uh, the chairman, give me one second. Uh, Matt Tanis, who is the new chairman, I don't know if we've said that at our meeting before, congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and I'll read the letter briefly, um, the Board of Health requested and budgeted a two-point-five percent salary increase for the health agent slash inspector. The board was not aware that a separate vote from the Board of Selectmen was also required in order, side note, for that, for them to receive that in their uh pay. Please affirm the vote to increase the health agent's rate of pay by two-point-five percent instead of the current two percent without the vote, uh, and make the increase retroactive to July first, twenty twenty, this increase will be in the amount of twenty-four dollars and ninety-two cents per week for fiscal year twenty-one, which is fifty-two point two-five weeks, his salary with a two-point-five proposed, two-point-five, excuse me, percent proposed increase will be fifty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. The approved budget for fiscal year twenty-one is voted at the annual town meeting is fifty-four thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, from the chairman of the Board of Health, Matt Tanis. So it sounds like, uh, what happened was, um, something got approved at the, so I'm just recapping, I know we all get it. Um, this was approved by voters, by residents at the annual town meeting, um, but because the Board of Selectmen never actually took a specific vote on the two-point-five percent increase, that's why the health agent slash inspector has been getting two percent as of July first, twenty twenty.
And they didn't notify the Board of Selectmen of the action, so.
Well, that, well, that implication is that's why.
Can I make like a statement?
Sure, of course.
Because people keep telling me they're not aware of this, and I know I have said this many, many, many times, I've said it at department head meetings, I've said it publicly here. The Board of Selectmen sets the wages, unless there's some other contractual document or thing or agreement that bounds the town to pay a certain wage. We don't have a personnel bylaw here, there's literally nothing else to go on, it's this board that does that. So you can present an idea for a budgeted cost at a budget, at a budget hearing or a budget meeting, during the budget process, it can go to town meeting, and it can be approved. Town meeting does not see line by line, they see personnel. So, you can present an idea for a budgeted cost at a budget, at a budget hearing or a budget meeting, during the budget process, it can go to town meeting, and it can be approved, town meeting does not see line by line, they see personnel and expenses, and that's it. Then you have to get the vote to request it. You can do this at the budget time, and the board can make a vote contingent if it's in their favor to do this. They can make a vote that is contingent upon annual town meeting authorization and allocation, but you have got to get them to vote it, and if it's not in the minutes, it didn't happen, so.
You said this at a department head meeting recently.
I've said this a, a bunch of times, so I'm saying it again, because I don't want someone to tell me they haven't, they didn't know.
Yeah.
Also, shameless plug, we have a form for payroll changes that helps the accounting department significantly, please fill it out.
It's called a payroll change form, right?
It's the old ra- it's called the payroll change form, it is very simple.
Write that down.
It is the ol- it is the old rate, what's the new rate, and everybody signs off on it, and it, it needs to, it helps our accounting team, uh, very much, they are not mind readers, they don't know everything that's going on in the town, um, well, they usually do, right, but it's not a given, so please help them out, uh, but that is how the process works, so I apologize that it wasn't clearly stated before, let it be known now, I guess, and that's how we're gonna stick to it going forward.
You know, this goes back to the previous town accountant, she would not institute a payroll increase without something in writing
But that's correct.
that off, absolutely.
It's, it's exactly correct.
That's a hundred percent correct.
People would get upset and say, well, how come I didn't get my raise, because there's been no paperwork filed, and the Board of Selectmen didn't vote to approve this.
Because how would the accountant know?
She would, she needs some directive, she needed a, a directive, we, we had a whole problem, and I sat down, yes.
Just like we needed one. We didn't know that this had happened, because it's not always made clear at the town meeting, like, great, voters approved it, but it needs to.
Well, they'll say.
So how did this happen, because I know what, we went through the budget process, we said two percent, I think, on all our, um, non-union members, correct?
Yes.
So then it went to the finance committee, did it change at the fin- cause I, we would just, so how did?
No, it did not, and anytime the finance committee made a change, you would go back and look at it.
So how did it get, so, how did the town people get to approve two and a half, when finance committee's recommendation as well as ours was a two percent?
So, I, what they say is not that they included the, the approved a two and a half increase, that's not what town meeting approved, they authorized a, a budget.
Budget.
But the budget is personnel, so that's everything that could ever be a personnel, so that's the office manager, that's the animal inspector, and that is Board of Health members, so, uh, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, okay, I understand, and this is a small, this is twenty-five dollars a week.
So that's a bunch of people smushed into one number, and it's not clear, so you can't say, in my opinion, it is erroneous to say town meeting approved this raise, no, town meeting approved a budget, but they didn't.
Sure. Correct, of which you wanted there to be a raise.
Right, and so now you have the funding source, you have the authorization, you can enter into this sort of agreement, he doesn't have anything written but an agreement, um, if you so choose.
Mm-hmm. So to your point, I guess, are you asking that because it doesn't, because we haven't voted, then we didn't, we never approved that, is what you're saying, right?
We never approved it, probably the finance committee approved it, no, I just was wondering, how did it get in the budget then that the townspeople approved, that, that was my.
Yes.
Correct. Correct. And not only that, but were they made aware, I can't recall from the meeting, were people made specifically aware that they were approving, like, I don't think they knew that either.
But they said. So, if you remember that, that meeting, we spent an awfully long time figuring out why somebody was being paid in the health agent line that should have been conservation and should have been private.
Yeah, there was, that whole thing was mixed up.
I remember that.
That was a debacle, debacle.
Yeah.
So, I did not remember, so I asked Care- uh, Mrs. Brady to look up the minutes, it is not in there, to see if there was a, um, specific vote talking about, or even a discussion of, we are looking for a two-and-a-half percent increase for this person, I asked her to look, and she did, at the finance committee, those were all Zoom meetings, if you remember, we were in full swing pandemic, and there was nothing there, no mention of it, so I know that their recollection is that they put it in the comment section, but you really do have to call attention to whatever the item is, and have a discussion about it, and then a vote for it to be effective or in effect, and that did not happen here. We looked back, we looked at our records, we checked to see if we missed something, because honestly, that's, that's a possibility, um, but it was just simply not there. So I had, since I had a great conversation with Mr. Tanis, um, and just said in the future, literally just lay it out specifically, I'm looking for a two-and-a-half percent increase for this person, and this is how much it's going to cost, uh, and that way everyone is.
And specifically tell us, because when it's in the, when, and they may have, and I, I fully admit, you know, it's, it's, we have so many conversations and meetings during budget
That you're looking for the vote, yes.
time, it's like literally impossible to remember every conversation, um, but I think it needs to be made clear that, yes, this is the total, and in that
Right.
we are asking for some of that to be allocated for this
Exactly.
extra point-five percent
Right.
salary increase, which is what we're disputing here right now.
And so what, what we would like to do, I spoke with Mrs., I spoke with Mrs. Brady about this, so what we're going to do going forward is, as we go through that budget process,
Discuss.
we are going to keep a running tally of what the non-union personnel are requesting for, for salaries, after town meeting, which is generally in June and before the end of the year, we, you usually have one extra meeting between town meeting and the, uh, July first, so we will bring that back to the Board of Selectmen, and you will see it on a piece of paper
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'm gonna be a hundred percent honest, I don't feel like this is, we don't need to change anything, I'm gonna be, I'm keeping it a hundred percent real with you right now, this wasn't discussed, not because of anything we did.
That shows everybody, that's what we're gonna do.
No, the procedure is in place.
This never got to us, we can't discuss something we're unaware of, we all know that.
There was a step in the procedure that was not followed, that's why I said this goes back to the previous town accountant, this isn't new.
Correct. Correct. Correct.
You know.
Uh, my only concern, um, and I don't know, you'll speak for yourself, my only concern is, I think everybody got a two percent, so, um, and I don't think I, if this specifically had been discussed, I probably would not have agreed to it, because we had that thing across the board.
I don't believe it, and when we reviewed the budget, we went through everybody's salary too, though, right, so how did they get bunched up to a, another half a percent?
Well, I do think that we spent a lot of time at that meeting, because I was caught off guard that somebody, in my opinion, was being paid twice to do the same thing, and you can't do that, that's a violation of state law.
Right.
You said that at the meeting.
So we were hyper-focused on that part of the budget, so it could have just been not mentioned, um, but you're right, we don't really look at the columns for the percent change.
Yeah. But I still, yeah.
Didn't they say the notation was out on the margin or something?
But I can't, those get cut off in printing and stuff, so like, I can't, I don't remember.
Well, at the, at the end of the day, they really should have speci- like verbalized it, and called attention to it, because otherwise, it's sort of, it, it's, this is what happens, otherwise.
Sure. Yeah, I guess what I'm just trying to say is, regardless of how the mis- how the miscommunication occurred, where it never got to us, I'm still not convinced that I would support this, so, uh, let's, do we wanna make a decision on this? I'll entertain motions either way for this. Not saying I'm gonna support it.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we, um, approved a salary increase of two-point-five percent for the health agent as submitted tonight.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Does that mean retroactive or starting tonight? I don't know when.
It would be retroactive, because the budget kicked in, I think, I think we have a comedy of eras, I think that, um, I, I, I think we all remember the discussion that night,
July one, okay.
Sorry.
not specifically in detail to this, the general discussion that was, as you said, a debacle, we had things going around in circles, trying to figure out if, with a chart or something, who's doing what and how is this happening, um, I think that, um, I have no questions or concerns about his performance, he does a good job, uh, he's, I think he goes over and above. And I don't hold him responsible for what took place, if the board, um, if the board says we did it, and as I said, they didn't follow the procedure in one step, which created the whole problem, which ends up back to us to try to straighten out the mess, so that's what I'm looking at.
I definitely agree, Mr. Pillings', uh, professionalism and just his results, s- they speak for themselves, for me, it's, uh, again, I'm not concerned with how this happened, I, I supported two percent for everybody, so I'm not gonna, uh, support this tonight.
Yeah, so, even though I second it, I, I, I feel the same way, I'm not gonna support it either, cause if, you know, if we approve it, then next year it's gonna come back again and again, and I think we need to
Mm-hmm.
let the departments know that we're not gonna just start approving this, because this is not what I was, under the understanding that this is what we were, we were doing, so I'm not supporting it either, but I did second it just for purpose of the motion.
Mm-hmm. 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 For discussion, and again, I just, before we take a vote, um, I can't, we, I, I think I speak for us all when we say, like, the work that has been done in the, in the health depart-, I'll call it the health department, um, a lot of it, Mr. um, Pillings and Mrs. Grassi have done together with the Board of Health, um, is, is remarkable, and this, my vote is no way in a reflection uh, of the work that is being produced, which again, helps Daytonians every day, and I think has quite frankly been very helpful, uh, especially during the pandemic, so I did just wanna say that before we took a vote.
I would just say that if, if we, if we were in that budget meeting tonight and this came up, I would have supported two and a half percent, and I understand where both of you are coming from, I just don't feel that, um, I wanna penalize, uh, and I realize this isn't gonna pass, but I don't wanna penalize the employee because the, um, the board he works for failed to follow established procedure, that's how this whole thing came about, but anyhow, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And again, I'm, I'm not so, just me, I, I can only speak for myself, I don't, I understand that things happen in government, because, um, it's government, like, it's, we have a, we, governments have employees, they have different departments, the right arm isn't, um, has issue talking to the left arm, and I'm just speaking in general, I understand that, as someone who's been a selectman for four or five, I know, I know that you definitely get it, and I know you get it too, Selectman Pacheco, for me, this was just a matter of, I stated that I was only gonna do two percent, so I'm just gonna stick to that, uh, consistency. It's not a penalizing, um, it's just what we did, um, during this budget year. Any further discussion, anyone?
I, I concur with what you just said, plus, we give anybody else, uh, a two-and-a-half percent increase, so, uh, I'm gonna vote against it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Abstentions, the motion does not pass. I barely say that, I almost, I was like, what's the saying? Okay. Now we are going to vote on first right of refusal for zero, it looks like a O, I think it's, that's Zero Horton Street, right? This is Papa Squash, correct? Mrs. Brady?
Um.
No, I could be wrong, I thought it was, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, no.
Okay, uh, Board of Selectmen, um, and the town administrator received a letter dated Oct-, uh, okay, it's October first, twenty twenty, um.
Wait, what?
It's not Papa Squash, it's not, it's.
No, this is, um, this is an individual, he's actually on Zoom, um, so I might hop over there and see if he's listening, it's Mr. Renzi.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Septem- dated September, so I skipped too far, too far down, um, dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty, uh, Zero Horton Street, Map Ten, Lot fifteen dash A, Chapter sixty-one A. That's correct, Madam Administrator, right?
Yes, yep.
Uh, please be advised on September sixteenth, twenty twenty, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend that the Board of Selectmen waive their right of first refusal for the property referenced above.
So I just have a quick question.
And the Board of Assessors is also recommending that we waive our right of first, first refusal. Madam Administrator?
I, we just have to wait for conservation, but he did, he did, so I'm, I'm sorry, I am, uh, he told us, is, sorry, uh, Mr. Frenette.
Who's he? Who's he? Okay.
So I apologize, I just wanted to make sure we heard from all the boards before you took action.
No, it's okay. Sure, yep, absolutely. We'll file that under due diligence, yeah, his email is here, I had to skip a little further down, um, so I will entertain motions, uh, regarding the right of first refusal at Zero Horton Street.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the right of first refusal and allow the property identified as Map Ten, Lot fifteen A on Horton Street to be taken out of chapter.
Sixty-one A, I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, um, I, I don't know if this is even irrelevant or a question that can be asked, do we have any idea what's gonna be done, like, why it's being taken, are we, are we even privy to that information?
Uh, you can ask. It's gonna build a home on part of it.
Not that my vote, I just am curious.
Yes, it's being, it's being, uh, subdivided, it's my understanding, that this is gonna be a house in the in-law, house also in-law apartment, but he, he gave us the, I believe it said, that he gave us this plan yet.
Okay. Uh-huh.
Explanation.
Uh-huh. Yes, okay, I see it.
Oh, this is quite, this is west of Smith Street on the south side.
Mm-hmm.
It's, and so, eh, but it's before Oak Street, okay, so that's, that's where it is, okay, Casino Wood Circle is up
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mm-hmm.
towards Oak Street, but not that far.
Do you want me to unmute or kind of contact him, or he's good, okay?
No, 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 I was just curious, and, and your answer, sir, has satisfied my curiosity, uh, any further discussion?
Maybe you can hear us, yeah.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
Mr. Renzi, just in case you didn't hear what was going on, because our audio is poor, um, the board just voted to deny the line.
Waive, waive the right of first refusal. Good luck, Mr. Renzi.
Good luck.
He's even there still, I don't know.
We'll give him a thumbs up, so he knows. Selectman Goulart, under Selectmen's report, you have the floor.
Okay, uh, just a brief rundown of the meeting we had, um, on September the sixteenth, um, we again talked about the environmental justice amendment to the climate bill, the climate bill, as we know, is still in conference committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I got an email today, and maybe you're gonna get it too, from somebody in Springfield wanting us to write a letter relative to another amendment, and I looked at it quickly and thought, I don't think so. Um, obviously, the amendment we're interested in is the beneficial one that allows these, uh, solar farms to become taxable, uh, guaranteed town meeting approval. Basically, what we want in that, the decision, uh, in the case where it was, uh, ISM Solar versing, versus the town of Dayton, um, the, uh, committee I'm on was, uh, wanting the, uh, leadership at MMA, both the executive director and the board of directors that oversee the entire organization, to take some action, uh, that hasn't happened, because MMA, uh, leadership feels that there is another committee at the, other than, uh, energy and the environment, uh, that should weigh in on this, and because this, uh, proposed change, an amendment to the amendment, uh, would have a impact on municipalities, so you can't just ask MMA to do something that's gonna take care of one or two communities, that's gonna impact everybody, um, the, uh, we did not submit, uh, more comments on the solid waste master plan, because we did it last year, and quite frankly, those recommendations are still, uh, worthy of consideration, so we don't, you don't, I mean, how many kind times can you discuss and, and give input on the same plan that you've already acted on? The other legislation pending is the Water Management Act, um, and we're gonna ask Alan Cofcatt on our committee, who is the, uh, water and sewer director for the town of Concord to, uh, check into this for us, um, there is a plan to form a DEP stormwater advisory committee, and this committee would be charged with updating the stormwater handbook, um, and we talked about potential workshops for the upcoming annual meeting, and I mentioned what, uh, we, services we've received from Serpent and Mass Audubon, and suggested that they contact, um, Don, Dan Kewons, so, um, there are a lot of proposals for workshops, obviously, they're gonna pare them down, they're talking about something like thirty-five, and of course, this is gonna be a virtual meeting, so maybe there will be, certainly more people will be able to tend, cause usually get in a room, and you, you can't even get in a room.
Yeah.
So, um, so anyhow, uh, that's, that's what we're working on right now, and I, uh, it was, uh, agreed that we would, uh, invite, um, the executive director, Jeff Beckwith, and, uh, the legislative representative, John Robinson, to come to our next meeting, if they're available, so, so that's that.
Nice. Mm-hmm. Thank you, Selectman Goulart. Now, Selectman Pacheco, did you have anything under reports?
Yes.
I don't have anything, no.
Well, did you wanna give a brief, um, maybe just about the ADA commission?
Sure, if you're gonna force me to, sure. We had last weekend, we formed a, uh, we formed our committee, uh, Jonathan Gale is now our chairman, uh, Jen Dukowski is, uh, vice chair, and, uh, Jocelyn Povaris is our clerk.
Nice.
And we, uh, voted, we talked about, we discussed the community garden next door.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we discussed possibly of, uh, grants for the, uh, get, uh, seeking a grant for the parks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I believe, uh, Mrs., uh, Aristine will be attending our next meeting, and also, um, we'll have somebody speak at our October fifteenth meeting
Alright, that's.
uh, from, uh, Department of Disa- uh, Disability, so.
That's awesome.
I was impressed with the new members, I didn't know, uh, Kevin Smith so much, I dealt with him as, uh, he did, he and his father did electrical work for the Titan Storoc Society, and the CVC branch, so I'm familiar with him and his father.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I really haven't had the conversations with him, and he is a very, uh, supportive of the. Uh but I really haven't had the conversations with him, and he is a very uh supportive of the uh plans that the ADA commission is is hoping to do.
Awesome.
I will, I will know that uh Jonathan Gale, I spoke to him today, and he won't be chair for that long because he is our ADA coordinator. And he understands that the ADA commission uh at some point may be giving him directions to what we wanted to do, so it might not be uh best that he be the chairperson. He fully understands that. Uh he got the meeting together, he got everything together.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
It was also a Zoom meeting, we're able to use the screen here, thanks to Jocelyn Tavarez and her knowledge of it.
Thanks. Mm-hmm.
Uh so, we're moving right along.
That's awesome.
Along the same line, I, if I can get permission from my my board and my colleagues to post something on our Facebook page about the Human Rights Committee.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know, do you have any issue with that?
Seeking more members in in the.
Yeah, yeah, who's who we appointed, and we still have some slots.
Okay, so so, and we don't want. We have some slots that we're gonna be getting together, uh so we'll come up on the mission.
Awesome.
Yep.
Sounds good, thank you. Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just think it's like, it's good work, and I feel like sometimes we just assume everyone knows what's going on because we do,
Yeah, that's true.
but it's like, we talk to each other.
Yeah, so.
So I, we just want people to know that good work is good.
Yeah, so I had planned to do that, but then I realized when the agenda came out, I didn't talk to Karen, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
And I saw that Mrs. Goulart had something on it, so I says I.
Oh, it's okay.
I wasn't sure whether or not I could.
It was a public meeting.
You forced me to order, and I probably did that, so.
I will continue to force you to do it.
It's all that, it's all that power with that no progress.
With the gas, with the gas. Okay, uh we also received, um and thank you both to my colleagues for their reports. Uh we also received an anonymous donation to Primetime, bear with me just a second.
Okay, we skipped Kyle Smiles.
Oh, I'm sorry, bear with me a second. Yes, and I wanted you to read that if you don't mind, Selectman Pacheco.
Yes, I'm not sure if I need to read the whole thing.
Or summarize, however you wanna present it.
Okay, yes, probably the um, the the first paragraph, which I think is the end, there's another paragraph. Dear members of the Dayton Select Board, Select Board, on behalf of the Preservation of Massachusetts, I am writing to inform you that James Briggs' house in Dayton has been included on a list of endangered properties for twenty twenty. Preservation Massachusetts is the statewide non-profit historic preservation organization dedicated to preserving the Commonwealth's historic and cultural heritage. We work in partnership with individuals, organizations, and to promote the preservation of historic buildings and landscapes as a positive force of economic development and retention of community uh character. For your info, and skipping down to another paragraph, for your information and clarification, this listing is only an honorary designation. It's not legally binding in any way, nor doesn't insinuate any regulatory authority on behalf of the Preservation of Massachusetts or the nominee. The program is not to be used as a negative smear or shame campaign, and we encourage positive collaboration with all parties in working towards a solution. This one does not entitle the resources, the nomin- nominators, groups, or owners to funding or professional services such as legal counsel, architectural drawing, studies, and et cetera. So I have been contacted by them regarding James Briggs' house, as well as Ralph Adelfin.
Mm-hmm.
And Ralph Adelfin is the one I believe that nominated from the Historic Commission, nominated that the Briggs' house be uh considered uh for this.
Mm-hmm.
So I I appreciate the work that he's done, but one of, in my conversations with the person I spoke to, uh I made it clear that the town's residents wasn't in support of preserving of the building that I had made the uh motion at a town meeting to come up with sixty thousand dollars to to put a roof on it, to kinda save the building a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And I pointed to him that the Historic Commission didn't second the motion, my colleagues didn't second the motion, nor any residents uh second the motion. And I had asked my wife not to second the motion because I think some people in town may have thought that my wife and I were gonna be moving into the building, so. I asked that she not uh, she not do that. So anyway, there, there was no interest in, I I would have liked to have the opportunity to explain my reason as to why we should preserve it. As as the board knows, I thought of it as a possibility as an entrance to a new life.
Mm-hmm.
But that's that's over with, and I made it clear to them that the town, this house is up for auction, it's gonna be moved, it is gonna be demolished, or it's gonna be moved.
Mm-hmm.
Uh the Historic Commission has worked very hard to try to preserve this, but it's been a, it's been s- over six months, and they haven't been able to find someone um to save it. So we we put it up for auction, and and there is some limited interest in in the house.
Mm-hmm.
So this, like it says, is an honorary, it doesn't stop us from doing everything that we need to do to, I hate seeing old houses, as the board knows, I have an old house.
I agree. Mm-hmm.
Uh but I pay for repairing it, and I have some tax base to pay for, so I understand the hurdle that would have uh had to be over overcome to preserve that house, so.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh I appreciate this, I appreciate Ralph Adelfin and the Historic Commission's done to have this house nominated, but unfortunately, uh I don't believe it's gonna necessarily stay in town. Hopefully, it stays intact, if somebody moves, they either taking it apart and putting it back together, or move the house as it is.
I agree. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh I'm not convinced that that's what's gonna happen either. Uh I hate to see old houses uh lost, but uh it was nice to get this designation. Um we probably should have other houses that.
I was, I was just gonna say, I think.
The other thing is that they made it uh clear that all the houses that were nominated also got this, got this thing, so there wasn't any houses that were eliminated, which I'm not sure if that means there weren't that many nominations.
Mm-hmm. Or they're just, the criteria is, yeah.
Or what exactly that means. Criteria, but we met it, I hate the loss of the house. You keep it, I I keep on thinking you're raising your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll stop moving.
It's not, it's not, I just.
I do it sometimes, too. Not for you, but for my kids.
I'm ju- well, I'm also like engrossed in the conversation, so I don't even notice I'm doing it, so I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, so it would have been nice to preserve uh the James Briggs' house, it has a lot of history. Uh it was built the same time that the Dayton Historic Society, uh the museum uh was built, the same seventeen seventy, so it's, I hate to see those uh uh buildings lost, but the people have spoken, and.
I agree.
Hopefully, we uh, we save some money, but not having to spend the money to demolish it if somebody takes it.
Sure. Mm-hmm. I think, you know, and and not to get a a little off topic, um but I think if w- if the town were in a different situation where we had like a a a, we didn't have to build a police station. It was just, we already had one that had been built a couple of years before, and we had a new fire station in a, in a library that meets uh modern needs. Then we could think about things like this, because we'd be in a situation where we have the basics covered, we have the infrastructure we need to provide the services that residents have come to expect and rely on. Unfortunately, we're not in that situation, so when it comes to, and I know, I'm I'm not speaking to you, I'm just.
Yeah.
To anyone who wonders why we have to make these difficult decisions, it's if we have to choose a new school or save the James Briggs' house. As a selectman, I'm gonna choose the school every time, because I feel like that's the responsible choice that has to be made, and it's not a choice that um I like to ha- have to make, but um that's what we sign up for when we run for public office, and and it, that's the downside of of making decisions like this. But I just want everyone to know, if we had infinite resource, if you had infinite resources to give us as a town, we would absolutely save every single one of these houses, and it would, we would have modern infrastructure. We wouldn't have to have a five-year plan. Um and so we just have to be realistic about the situation we're in, and that that resources are finite, so. Um I just don't want anyone to think that we do not care about history. Um I'm blessed to work with someone um who cares about it a lot, actually, and someone who knows about it a lot, the both of you. So um I find that to be enriching for me.
Does that have something to do with age, Karen?
I think so, but.
Wealth of knowledge, experience.
Experience, I was just gonna say.
Write that down in that little book.
Selectman Pacheco, did you have anything else under correspondence?
Uh no, that was a.
Selectman Goulart? Okay, um acknowledge uh an anonymous donation to Primetime. I cannot seem to find this in the agenda. Does someone wanna read this, my.
Yes, we are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a donation in the amount of thirty dollars.
Twelve A.
As usual, all donations are turned over to the town account and deposited in Primetime gift and donation account. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to call. Uh so that's, that's Sheila, new assistant manager, program manager.
Yep. I will entertain motions.
Uh Mister Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the donation of thirty dollars to the Primetime gift and donations account.
Yeah, I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
I just wanna mention, uh Primetime made me think of it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh uh the uh acknowledge, recognize, express sympathy for the horrendous fire that ruined the senior citizens' building in Rehoboth. That was a beautiful building. It wasn't old, old either, and I don't know if they've determined what caused it yet, but I drove by it even, I think it was early this week. The only thing standing is that front portico.
The facade, I know.
It, everything is gone. It's just amazing.
So sad.
Uh it was, it was beautiful. It was a great building.
Yes, we, we think we met in there, right?
That's, that's where we knew it was meant.
We did, can I believe the last time we were in there, that was the last time we would ever, we, none of us thought that.
Yeah.
It's, it was only twenty years old, and I thought it was before uh they had to put sprinklers in, I think now with half of us, uh sprinklers in our new building, uh that size.
Mm-hmm. 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 Mm-hmm.
So station, uh, what was it, the station, the one that hundred people died in when I.
Oh, the fire, the station fires.
Station nightclub.
Oh, station nightclub.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I was also for that, we had to put sprinklers in, so.
Station nightclub. Yeah.
It was sad, I was, it seems like people are getting together on Rehoboth to assist the the town and even meals for the seniors and.
Uh. Yeah, the um, it just so happened, uh I did not know about the uh fire. I I al- I also have a note here. I want to acknowledge and thank our fire department for the flu clinic.
Mm-hmm.
That they had last Sunday.
Recently, yeah.
So my husband and I went to the flu clinic, and we had tickets to the Lion's Chicken Barbecue in Rehoboth.
Mm-hmm.
So it was at the American Legion Hall, and that's when we saw the fire, and it was like, whoa.
Oh, wow.
Um my understanding is the Legion is allowing the people that did the meals for the seniors to use their facilities. Uh it's right down the road, obviously, it's not as big and everything else, but they at least have a place to prepare. Uh and um I know I saw an article in the paper, they said, absolutely, they're going to rebuild, so.
Yeah, I saw that, so.
Um but it it was just, how how could it go so quickly? But I realized they don't have pressurized water, and um
Mm-hmm.
I know Berkeley responded, we didn't respond because obviously, they had enough tankers, uh which is how they had to fight it.
Mm-hmm.
But did we. We were assisting in Swansea as well. It was a very busy day.
So we covered. Swansea went to the fire, so I think.
Yes, so we covered their station.
Yeah, that's what it was. Um if my colleagues think it's um appropriate, do you think we could si- maybe send Rehoboth a letter, like express our um.
Yeah, I think that would be nice.
Just let them know if they need anything. Do you need a meeting space? Like I I don't doubt they wanna drive all the way here.
Can we help you with anything?
Correct.
You know.
Um let's reach out to our sister city. We have to reach out to them anyway, 'cause we need to have a meeting. Ob- obviously, it might be postponed now.
I actually, um.
Well, we can have it in Dayton.
Correct, yeah.
We did um reach out to them on the Human Rights Committee. Jen Duchkowski suggested getting the lower, uh excuse me, like a younger group through the school. So I took that opportunity to also say, hey, you know, we're really sorry, and let us know whatever we can do, but I think a letter is nice.
Would be nice.
Yeah, we'll set, that we can sign and um and send, um and then reach out, um.
And then, I'm sorry, what are we reaching out for?
If we need to ha- if they would like, probably not right now, but let them know when when they're settled and and they can uh think about something else other than the fire, obviously. Um please um let us know if they'd like to have a meeting. That might be a good chance to have a conversation with them about what they need face to face, so um let's do that. If that's okay, Madam Administrator.
That's fine with me, I'm just writing a note to schedule.
Yeah, I think they have a lot on their plate, they have another budget for now, so I just don't know uh if we're gonna actually.
They do. Just let them know we're thinking about them, if they need anything from uh us, the sister town, we'll be there for them, okay?
Sure. Will do.
Thank you. Uh minutes, uh we have the approval of the minutes for the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Library Board of Trustees meeting of July thirtieth, twenty twenty. The approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's dangerousness hearing of August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. And the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. You've been very busy, Mrs. Brady, thank you.
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. We also have accept for review the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of September ninth, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion that you accept for for review the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of September ninth, twenty twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Selectman Goulart, approval of the warrants, you have the floor.
Mister Chairman, I move that the following warrants dated September sixteenth be approved. Twelve A dash twenty-one in the amount of ninety-five thousand, forty-six dollars, ninety-nine cents payroll. Twelve B dash twenty-one in the amount of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars, fifty-four cents accounts payable be approved.
You second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
Mister Chairman, I move that warrants dated September twenty-third be approved. Number thirteen A dash twenty-one in the amount of a hundred nine thousand, seven hundred two dollars, thirteen cents payroll. Thirteen B dash twenty-one in the amount of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars, fifty cents payroll.
You second that.
Warrant, uh I got two more, warrant, thirteen C dash twenty-one in the amount of five hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars, forty-nine cents accounts payable. Thirteen D dash twenty-one in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars, eighty-eight cents accounts payable be approved.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Um public input, did we have anything from um email, telephone, or Zoom chat?
Nothing on Zoom, it's just us.
Just.
Oh, you can see up there, did you see me? I'm still, I'm not in the habit of having this yet. Um sir, did you have something? I thought you raised your hand.
Okay, uh I would wanna ask you, uh are the latest on the auction, has it been resolved yet?
It's.
I can take that if you want.
Yeah, Madam Administrator.
So the surplus equipment has been all taken care of, we're arranging pickups, and uh that netted a little over thirty thousand dollars, so uh it's a success.
Yeah. Alright.
Uh the house, we had to um, so we have to advertise for our auctions, and there was an error, so we relisted because the error was on the part of the auction company. Uh they were told when to have it ex- uh end, they ended early, so it's been essentially delayed by two weeks.
Oh, by two weeks.
So it's still, yeah, so it's still there, um it's still up, and if people are interested in bidding, we welcome them to do so.
Alright, and uh I would like to see if.
Oh, can you identify yourself on my.
Michael DeCicco on this app.
Thank you, sir.
What list did the Briggs' house just call on?
Oh. I got it, I got it, I can um.
Sorry.
It's Preservation Massachusetts has a list, alright, hold on, whoa, we gotta go.
Oh, yeah, it's Preservation Massachusetts, give me a sec, it's right here.
There's all these minutes, Karen, oh my gosh, you've been so busy.
Yep, it's Preservation Massachusetts uh Dayton Endangered Nomination.
Endangered. So it's the Massachusetts Most Endangered Historic Resources Program.
And this is now an endangered resource of twenty twenty. Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't help uh my, give the.
It's it's, Selectman Pacheco.
It's an honorary uh recommendation, so it's appreciated, but there's not much we can do.
And it's not, just to be clear, just for people watching, it's not that it doesn't help, this, it it wouldn't help any house in any town, I guess is 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 a.
Yes.
You know, it's something where I think if you were gonna make a case to a town meeting, that would be a fact you would give, you would say this has been um put in this store.
As a preemptive.
Exactly, exactly.
Preemptive.
But it would be good, as you stated, Selectman Pacheco, if they did this for some other town, um houses that they think could be.
Houses, yeah. Yes.
In danger. Mister De- DeCicco?
That's it.
That's it? Oh, Michael DeCicco, well, thank you. We're off the hook easy tonight, right?
Are you planning, Mister DeCicco, are you planning to write anything about the community garden?
Softball.
Yes.
Good.
Uh what property is on, what house is on now?
That same house, the Briggs' house.
Yeah. Nine four nine Somerset Avenue.
I didn't have the restroom or.
No worries, no worries, yep.
It'd be a nice, well-rounded feature, yep.
I will put you in touch with um Mrs. Patricio and Mrs. Barr.
I already have a name.
Oh, okay, oh, I, okay, so you had a conversation with them, okay. You're quicker than I thought, Mister DeCicco. Okay, hearing no further public input, uh we are, I am going to rather, entertain motions to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, numbers three and six. Three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do so declare. Clerical union contract negotiations, an update on school committee, teachers' union negotiations, and number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, I do so declare. Boat, ramp, road, update, open session will not reconvene.
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, roll.